Good evening. The September 5th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting for New Hanover County is now called to order. My name is Colin Tarrant. I am the Chair of the Planning Board. I'd just like to welcome everyone in the audience, both here in the building as well as at home. If I could remind everyone who's here to please turn off and silence all of their mobile devices. If you plan on speaking tonight, please make sure that you've signed in. The meetings are closed captioned for public broadcast. So make sure if you come up to the mic, you speak clearly so that everyone can understand and hear you into the microphone. At this time, if I could have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We do have a little bit of business to take care of from our previous meetings.
We do have approval of the minutes on the agenda. These are minutes from the July 30th, 2024 Planning Board Agenda Review and from the August 1st, 2024 Planning Board Regular Meeting. We do have a little bit of business to take care of from our previous meetings. We do have approval of the minutes on the agenda. These are minutes from the July 30th, 2024 Planning Board Agenda Review and from the August 1st, 2024 Planning Board Regular Meeting.
So moved. Approval so moved.
Move. Motion's made. Second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Those minutes are approved. The items from tonight's meeting will go forward to the County Commissioners' meeting tentatively scheduled for Monday, October 7th, 2024. The meeting will begin at approximately 4:00 PM and will be held here in the New Hanover County Historic Courthouse. The Planning Board Representative scheduled for that meeting is Clark Hip. Now, in accordance with the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners' Resolution, adopting a Code of Ethics as adopted on January 4th, 2016, is the duty of all county boards and committees to respect and abide by the New Hanover County Code of Ethics in the performance of their duties. More specifically, all Planning Board members should, number one, obey all applicable laws; number two, uphold the integrity and independence of the board; number three, avoid impropriety; number four, faithfully perform the duties of the office; and number five, conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. It is further the duty of every board member to avoid conflicts of interest as defined in North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160D, Section 109. Does any member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the board this evening?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hip.
Item two, Mr. Hunt and Sorth Contracting are a client of mine in my architecture practice, so I will have to step aside for that particular item.
Okay. Do we need a motion now or should we wait till that agenda matter?
I would go ahead and reiterate it at the beginning of that agenda item, but now it's fine as well.
Okay. So Mr. Hip has a conflict for matter number two on the agenda. Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Hip?
So moved.
A motion has been made. Is there second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll reiterate Mr. Hip's conflict and his excusal by the board at the time of matter two's hearing. Does anyone else have a conflict? And if so, please identify that conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. The items on tonight's agenda are public hearings. The format for tonight's public hearing is that each side will have a total of 20 minutes, 15 minutes for presentations and five minutes for rebuttal. As a reminder, this board is only an advisory board. The Board of Commissioners makes the final decision on any of the requests being considered tonight, but public comment tonight can impact our recommendation and what may ultimately be presented to the Commissioners. At this time, we're going to move into our regular agenda items. Our first matter for public hearing is a rezoning request, Z24-17, a request by BDLCT LLC as applicant and property owner to rezone approximately 27.55 acres located at 3500, at the 3500 block of Castle Hain Road from the R20 Residential District and removing the Special Highway Overlay District to the PD Plan Development District for a mixed residential and commercial development. At this time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Zoned R20 and consisting of several parcels. The site is bound by Chair Road, Castle Hain Road, and Interstate 140. As you can see, can we get the presentation up? Yes, thank you. As you can see here, parcels in the vicinity are zoned R20 Residential, B2 Business, Industrial, and PD Plan Development. There are also some pockets of higher density residential. The site remains largely undeveloped with a few homes existing along Chair Road. Here is an aerial photo with images of the property from different angles. The site is heavily wooded, also seen here as an old NC DOT service road that the applicants are petitioning the state to abandon. The surrounding area features an existing cemetery, a community center, a church, residential development, and the new tractor supply across Castle Hain Road. Here are examples of R20 residential development. Here are some examples of commercial and a PD development. And here are some examples of the proposed housing types. This is the applicant's initial concept plan included in your packet. To the north is Interstate 140 where the applicant is requesting the SHOD or Special Highway Overlay District be eliminated. To the east is Castle Hain Road, to the south is Chair Road, and to the west is Emerson Drive. Here's the proposed access easement for the cemetery, utilities, and emergency use only. This is the historic Grady Moore Cemetery. And in this bubble on the north side is approximately 10.23 acres. This portion of the site is to be for commercial use with the intention of locating a large grocer here. This area is designated for residential multifamily use with a maximum of 115 dwelling units on approximately 8.24 acres. This equates to about 14 dwelling units per acre. The area identified here as retail is approximately 7.75 acres. A list of permitted uses has been provided to you in the supplemental, supplemental to the staff report. Here you can see the proposed internal road and the NC DOT right of way to be, oh, it's, sorry, says acquired, to be abandoned. The terms, oh, let me go back, sorry. The Terms and Conditions Document submitted along with the concept plan specifies specific uses prohibited within these areas and sets specific standards for development regarding sidewalks, buffers, set box, and heights. Staff determined there was not sufficient information regarding the mixed uses, transitions, and densities within the concept plan and Terms and Conditions Document. After discussions with the applicant, they have provided an updated concept plan and Terms and Conditions with the intent of providing more clarity to address these staff concerns. Here's the applicant's revised concept plan. Per the Terms and Conditions, the residential area now includes vertical mixed-use development. This will be residential uses above ground-level commercial uses along the interior road connecting Chair Road to Castle Hain Road. Looking at this area here. The retail area will remain the same, with the same uses permitted. The mixed-use area will also include vertical mixed-use development consisting of residential uses above ground-level commercial uses. Along the western portion of the residential area, there's a newly designated transitional residential area intended to provide a transition to the residentially-zoned lots along Emerson Drive. The density here will not exceed eight dwelling units per acre and the units will not exceed three stories in height. Just to the north of the transitional residential area is the area designated as transitional commercial. The Terms and Conditions states this area will contain no commercial buildings and shall be limited to parking, streets, pedestrian ways, signage, stormwater management features, landscaping, and infrastructure to support the PD development. The addition of these specifications in the Terms and Conditions Document is intended to provide a transition between the intensity of uses, specifically between commercial and residential, and also between existing single-family homes and a higher-density residential multifamily use. Additionally, there will be a greater mix of uses within the plan development. And the initial submittal brought concerns over residential density, whereas the revised plan and Terms and Conditions Document addressed these concerns by including residential use in the area previously designated solely as retail. There is one state transportation improvement project in the area. The proposed development is estimated to generate approximately 400 AM and 750 PM peak hour trips. As a result, a traffic impact analysis was required for the project. Here you can see the site access onto the surrounding street network. As previously stated, the access easement in the northwest corner shall be used strictly for the purpose of the cemetery access, utility access, and emergency vehicle access. The approved traffic impact analysis requires improvements to four intersections adjacent to the site, which I will review. One stoplight located at Chair Road and Castle Hain Road will include a second left-turn lane onto Castle Hain Road, an extended right turn on to southbound onto Chair Road, and a U-turn lane heading south on Castle Hain Road. The second stoplight shown here includes a left-through lane exiting eastbound I-140, a left-turn lane into the site from northbound on Castle Hain Road, and a right-turn lane entering the site from southbound Castle Hain Road. Entering the site at the new internal road from eastbound on Chair Road, there will be a newly constructed left-turn lane. And from westbound on Chair Road, there will be a new right-turn lane here. Entering the site at the mixed-use area from westbound on Chair Road, there will be a new right-turn lane. The proposed development would generate approximately a dozen more school-age children than current zoning. The site is located along a rapidly changing area between two commercial nodes and adjacent to I-140. River Bluffs, a planned development located west of the site on Chair Road, was approved in 2017 with a variety of housing types and increased density. Currently, these residents are traveling a few miles south to the closest commercial node of Wright's Borough for most goods and services. The addition of the proposed retail services will be beneficial to the surrounding community. Site design places retail components near I-140 and Castle Hain Road, transitioning to mixed use toward the center and around the internal road. Residential components are located to the west of the mixed use and transitional residential and commercial areas are adjacent to the residential lots along Emerson Drive. The Comprehensive Plan designates this property as being part of the community mixed use and the general residential place types. Community mixed use includes commercial uses and encourages development patterns that serve all modes of traffic along major roads and corridors, while general residential allows for commercial uses that can support nearby neighborhoods. Because this area is envisioned to transition over time into a commercial node and nearby higher-density residential development is supportive of these types of retail development, the proposed PD district is appropriate for the site. The updated site plan and terms and conditions provide a greater mix of uses within the site and a more appropriate residential density spread throughout. Staff's recommendation is based on policy guidance of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Staff's initial recommendation was that the item be continued to the October 3rd, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to allow more time for the applicant to submit additional details regarding uses and site components. Additional documents have been provided by the applicant with details regarding land uses, site components, and transitional elements. These have been provided to you by staff. If, after reviewing the supplemental materials and information presented at the public forum this evening, the board feels the applicant has adequately addressed staff concerns, the board may find an alternate motion appropriate. Should the rezoning be approved, development of the site will be subject to additional development review. This concludes my presentation. Mr. Timlow of County Engineering is here and the applicant is here and has prepared a presentation.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for staff at this time?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hip.
Ms. Doss, thank you for your presentation. You, can you go back to Slide 10? That, that's it. So the, does this revised or additional clarification on the uses of the portions of parcel, does it change the units per acre from the original, the original applications?
That's a good question. The original application designated the residential portion and the transitional residential area as the only part of the site that was residential in use. And so that density in that specific area was calculated at 13.95 dwelling units per acre. However, by, by amending this plan and they have expanded the use of residential into this area here designated as mixed use, which was previously solely retail. And they have also, so that, that would, that would make the density less in the residential designated area. Also, this density is set at a max of eight dwelling units per acre per the Terms and Conditions Agreement.
Which is lower than their original?
Yes.
Okay. Another question, the revised plan, does it change access to Emerson? As originally, that we, I originally understood that access to Emerson would be limited only for emergency traffic and to provide access to the cemetery.
I believe that's, that's what this is also, and utility.
Okay.
Oh, is, you're asking, is that, is a utility added?
What I understand is that they've come to y'all and provided additional information.
Yes.
Trying to understand the difference between what they've applied, what they've originally presented a month ago and what they have presented to y'all in the last week.
I believe the access is, is the same.
Okay. We can ask the applicant. I believe that was all the questions I had. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thanks, Ms. Doss. It seems to me that there was some significant changes to the, oh, sorry. Hi, sorry about that. It appears that there was some significant kind of roadway work that was planned, but not until 2029 and that this TIA is approved. Do you know if this is the work that is proposed to improve traffic? Is that in line with or even exceeding what the DOT was planning to do as well in this area?
I, as this, the TIA has been approved and I believe that this would, these improvements further are above and beyond what was previously approved. Is that, does that answer your question?
I think so. And so as part of the approval of this, the developer will be funding all of that work? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Some more?
These are, these are specifically related to this development for the TIA.
Ms. Doss, just two questions. Just for clarification or more education, can you explain to the board exactly the intent of the PD district? Because I know it was used for River Bluffs, but since that point, I don't think it's been used exclusively. So just kind of some re-education as far as flexibility, characteristics of PD? And then I have another question after that.
Great. The PD district is intended to allow that flexibility of uses throughout the development where you have residential, you may have different densities, different, different housing densities. It's, it's mixed, some, mixed with commercial and it's to allow for a larger planned area instead of one specific zoning designation for one type of housing or type of commercial.
Mr. Mork and I add a little bit because I do want to go over some of the changes that were made when this district was updated back in 2019. So previously, the Plan Development District, it required a master plan be approved by the governing board, but the ordinance outlined a lot of specific standards just for this district. One of the things that we recognized when we were updating the development ordinances is that there was a need for a mechanism to allow for a development that we couldn't necessarily anticipate. So the Plan Development District was changed so that with the combination of a concept plan and a Terms and Conditions Document, you could have a project that could allow a mix of uses. That's not elsewhere allowed in our development ordinance. You could have more innovative projects. We've seen this used specifically for projects that require multiple phases. The Hanover Reserves Project at the end of Mariupol Road and Military Cutoff Extension, that was under our new Plan Development District. The Whiskey Branch Project that combined mixed-use, commercial, townhomes, multifamily on South College Road, that was a plan development. And I was reminded today, I think one of the most recent plan developments was actually for an educational facility attached to North Side Baptist Church off of North College Road. So that was a plan development. What kind of cuts and provides that flexibility is that in these types of projects, the developer is required to show that there is some community benefit that is proposed. That could be that mix of uses, that could be transportation improvements, it could be school sites. There are a variety of different things that the applicant could propose in exchange for greater flexibility. Does that kind of address some of the questions?
Yes, very much so. Yes, thank you. And I guess my second question, Rebecca, this is probably more to you. From the changes, so what we have proposed in our packet and then over the last week and a half or so, you guys got some new information from the applicant. Do you feel like it addresses the questions that y'all had as far as continuing the item? Do you feel like, or at least, and I guess let me back up as far as not continuing, but do you feel like it at least addresses the intent of the PD of what it was set out to do for what you have with the new information?
So, so what I can say is that when we discussed this with the applicant and the rationale behind our recommendation of the continuance, there were a couple of different things that we noted that we wanted more information on. One is how some of the density would transition from more intensity at the roadway to the general residential areas and the existing community. So some of the things that we talked about was that transitional area where there were going to be limitations on the commercial development and on the residential densities. And so that was addressed in what they provided. One of the other components that we had requested more information on was the mixed-use component that was referenced in the Terms and Conditions Document, but was not clarified on the concept plan. And so they had provided some of that clarification. The project itself, from what our review was, is with that transition would be generally consistent with what was recommended by the Comprehensive Plan. And we don't have any technical details at this point that cause us to think that it wouldn't be something that we could support from a technical standpoint. It would address a lot of our questions. We have had the information a short period of time. It's not included in your staff analysis, but it did address the questions that we had.
Thank you, Rebecca.
We do have Ms. Doss. Does anyone else have any additional questions for staff? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Doss. We'll now move into the applicant's presentation. We do have folks signed up to speak. I believe everyone who signed up to speak is with the applicant. The applicant will be given 15 minutes. If there's anyone else here that would like to speak in support, they will be able to speak during the applicant's time. At the conclusion of their 15 minutes, we'll move into the opposition. And I do have folks signed up to speak in opposition as well. So at this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. My name is Matt Nichols. I'm an attorney in Wilmington and I'm representing the applicant, who is also the owner of the property. And we appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation. With me this evening are my client representatives, Burrows, Smith, and John Lennon. And we have a series of slides that will help explain the, the request that's before the board. I know that the board is very familiar with the area. Here's an overview. And this is really an ideal site for a PD district. The proximity of I-140, we have one of our area's major employers with GE in very close proximity. And River Bluffs, which was mentioned earlier, which was a project that I'm very proud to have worked on, it is a PD development also. But since River Bluffs, as Ms. Roth mentioned, there's been some changes to the PD ordinance which allow these smaller sites to come forward with this framework, which is really, it's really a very good district in your ordinance. It used to require, I think, 100 acres to do a PD. And then that's been reduced. So I hope as we go through the presentation tonight, we can explain why the PD district is so much better of a framework than the current R20 district that was put on this site probably 30-plus years ago. So before I get too far into the presentation, I know Burrows wanted to say a few words.
Good evening, I'm Burrows Smith and I just want to introduce our development team. So that stands for Burrows, Dennis, Linda, Carol, and Tom. Those are my partners. And they were the main partners at River Bluffs with me as well. I'm the managing partner of River Bluffs. And so I'm the youngest of the crowd, actually, so that says something. I don't know, they've been with me for 17 years, so I don't know if they're smart or not, but anyway. River Bluffs has been great and we wanted, when I've been out there kicking around and developing since 2007 and I've seen the need all these years for some more restaurants and with, we've sold 530 home sites so far, the need for a good grocery store. And this is the perfect site, so it took us about 10 years to assemble the property and here we are. And I think it's a much-needed addition to the local community. We've always tried to be really good partners with the Chair Road people and we would continue to. You know, we brought a water main down Chair Road that now gives them fire protection with fire hydrants. We partnered with the county on that. We've brought sewer to the area, we've widened the road, we're going, you know, hopefully get this passed and put in a stoplight, which is much needed. And people are starting to tap into the water main now with the PFOS problem. Now they're getting good KFAIR Public Utility Water. So this would hopefully give us some more opportunities to maybe do another partnership with KFAIR Public Utility Authority to put in a regional lift station on our site as part of the reasoning for that access utility component of the road out to Emerson and may allow for a sewer line to go out and service some of the properties on Emerson. So those are the kind of considerations we've been thinking about, you know, all along. And I appreciate your time and I'll turn it back to Matt.
I'll go through these slides quickly. If I'm going too slow or fast, please let me know. The site consists of, I think roughly 13 or so parcels. And as explained in the overview, the PD, the MPD plan has essentially divided the property up into these PD pods. The, as mentioned, the, the more recent changes, I think, are improvements. Previously, we had a retail section up at the corner of Chair Road and Castle Hain Road and after discussions with the county, thought it would be beneficial to allow a vertical mixture of uses in there. So we would propose having some residential in that front retail area. And to Mr. Hip's point earlier, we are not asking for any increase in density in doing that. The density is capped at 115 residential units for the entire site, which is really not dense for the acreage here at 27.55 acres. The benef, many benefits of doing that, but one is the more residential we put into the retail site, I think adds for a sort of a more dynamic development with the mixture of uses. But it also, it would lessen the residential in the But it also, it would lessen the residential in the, what's designated as the residential multifamily, and make it less dense as you transition to the existing residential on Emerson. What's proposed for the commercial grocery retail site shown in the teal color is exactly that. That would be sort of the focus of the commercial component. And then, as mentioned, we would be proposing also the vertical mixture of uses along the connector road between Chair Road and Castle Hain Road. The transition residential and the transition commercial, those were recent additions, and we put further limitations on that, and that's explained in the terms and conditions document. And so, in the transition residential area, it'd be eight units an acre, which is very much in line with your comprehensive plan. And then, in the transition commercial area, we're proposing no commercial buildings at all. It would just be infrastructure-type improvements. On the question of the access, there's no access proposed from Emerson to the site for, I would say, regular access, but emergency access, yes, it could be a gated, emergency access only. And then, of course, we're proposing the access easement for the cemetery would be there also. I discussed both of those areas here, and I'm glad to answer any questions about those items. That roughly is about 150 feet in depth, that transition area. So, I have some photographs. I'll go through these quickly. This is, the property is seen from Castle Hain Road, the St. James AME Church. You can see the I-41 interchange in the distance there. This is looking on Chair Road eastward toward Castle Hain. As we go through this, a couple of things I would emphasize is, on the, sort of the infrastructure improvements alone are a huge benefit to the area. I'm going to have John Lennon come up and explain. There's been numerous discussions with the NCDOT on what those improvements will look like, and that's, again, the roadway improvements alone are a huge benefit to the area. Burrows talked about the opportunity for the water and sewer partnering with the county and CFPUA. That's also a huge benefit to the area. You can see the property, here's basically from the I-140 overpass. This is, there's an access road that is sort of parallels Castle Hain Road, and that's shown on the next slide here, sort of the overview, but you can see the property on the left. So, this is sort of a bird's-eye view of the, of the subject property. We've labeled that as subject property, but please keep in mind, the property is that entire frontage, this is an approximate property line, but, and it goes further back as it is adjacent to the single-family residences on Emerson. But the current access road I mentioned is shown here. Now, you really just have a stop sign there. It's, I would respectfully contend with the improvements, it will be a safer, safer transportation arrangements all around. You have a access here to the access road, and then you've got the existing intersection. I'm going to ask John to come up and talk about the roadway improvements because that is a major part of this. John?
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Again, my name is John Lennon. I work with Burrows, with BDLCT, and also River Bluffs. Our first conversations with North Carolina DOT started seven years ago on this, this project, actually prior to us having all the parcels fully assembled, but we started the conversations back then. The TIA itself took approximately a year and a half to complete and to work its way through the MPO with revisions. It's also been through congestion management in Raleigh. The service road that Matt indicated, under this proposed plan, would ultimately go away. It was called a controlled access break, and that has been approved subsequent to our submittal by DOT for that to be closed down and not be part of, an integral part of the improvements that you see. One of the big questions, and frankly, the original thought was to reroute Chair Road completely, to have one light where it is currently at the interstate. Traffic engineering is a science. I'm not one, but I've been involved with DOT a long time. It actually, the light cycle that it would have taken would have created more congestion to just have that one light, so DOT opted for the two lights, the one at Chair and Castle Hain Road, and then the other at the I-140. You'll also notice that there are no, there's no ability to leave the site through Site Access 3 and go straight on to the I-140 eastbound ramp. And that was purposeful on the part of DOT. That additional time in the light cycle would be prohibitive to the open flow of traffic. So, this would be phased. The light at Castle Hain and Chair Road obviously is the first thing to go, to be installed. And it's also important to point out that not only are there turning movements, but substantial amount of stacking required as well, up to 350 feet on the I-140 westbound ramp. So, if you're coming down and turning left to get into the project, it'd be 350 feet as opposed to the, I believe it's 200 that's there currently. Additionally, one of the questions that came up in the public meeting had to do with, on Chair Road and Castle Hain Road, the addition of another left-turn lane to go north on Castle Hain Road, and whether that would encroach on the church's existing right-of-way and driveway. And the answer is no, it would not. That, that would go into the right-of-way on the north side of Chair Road. So, their curb line would be almost identical to what it is now, to allow for that left turn, additional left turn to be installed. I'd be happy to answer any other questions about that at the appropriate time.
Mr. Chairman, with the two and a half minutes I have left, I'll go through just a few of the final slides. I won't read through all of the consistency with the comprehensive plan, but the point was made earlier by Plan Board Member, Mr. Moore, that the PD ordinance, the purpose and intent of it, we would respectfully contend, this proposal meets all, meets all the goals and policies and what you would want to see in a development in that particular location with the surrounding area and the improvements that have been made in that area since the property was originally zoned R-20. I won't read through all these. I think in looking at the comprehensive plan, mixed use or some variation of mixed use is mentioned over 60 times. It is such a critical part of your comprehensive plan, and this is an opportunity in the, again, in the right location to have, at what we would contend is a very meaningful mixed-use And there's just many places throughout the comprehensive plan that emphasizes all the benefits of mixed use. To name a few, you have internal capture of trips. People aren't having to get out on Castle Hain Road to get to a grocery store or to get to goods and services that live in the vicinity of Chair Road. We're going to be increasing the residential density, which is a very good thing. We have a, we have a need for more housing in the county, and so, we're going to be providing more housing than would be allowed under the R-20. Again, I won't read through all these, but it, the, the comprehensive plan is full of many examples and policies that support mixed, mixed use. In particular, we noted that in the, one part of the comprehensive plan talked about, quoted another comment referred to more community mixed-use along Castle Hain Road by adding grocery stores, pharmacies, and restaurants to the area. And we would contend this is exactly filling and identifying that need. Won't read through these charts. I know the, I know the board is very familiar with the comprehensive plan. But again, ultimately, before the board is, is this a better framework for this property than the R-20? And we would respectfully contend, yes, it is. It is in the community mixed-use as well as the general residential, and we were content that this is consistent with the goals and policies of both of those. And I'll end with the last slide here, if you care to read some of the items, but I think I addressed all these. We appreciate your time very much this evening, and we're glad to answer questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. At this time, is there any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions.
All right, Mr. Hip.
First of all, the, I would, I would, I would agree with the comments regarding the benefits that this type of development provides to Castle Hain Road and that community. This is a wonderful example in my mind of a nodal-type development, providing a grocery store, providing other commercial services, or should help reduce some of the trips on our, our streets. And so, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. All that being said, it is important that we, the county, this board, understand exactly what the impact will be to the neighborhood. So, I had a few questions specifically about the site plan.
Yes, sir.
So, if you could, I apologize, I didn't check the slide number. It's one of your early slides where you showed the transition in the residential areas.
Yes, sir. I think I've got it.
There you go. Perfect. So, to clear, to have more clarity, I understood that one of the, one of the concerns that I understood staff had in the initial application was that the area identified as residential multifamily, in the, in the terms, conditions, and other information that you provided, it was referred to mixed, a mixed use. And so, I understand that y'all have tried to clarify what you mean by mixed use in that node, I'll call it, or that bubble.
Yes, sir.
Can, can you provide more clarity on what you mean by mixed use and where you anticipate that, the commercial portions of that mixed use will be?
Yes, sir. Just so I understand, we're talking about the orange area. Yes, sir. Okay. So, in the sort of supplemental terms and conditions document that we provided, we specified that in the, the residential multifamily, the or, I'll say the orange pod, that the vertical mixed use would be allowed along the, and by that I mean residential uses above ground-floor commercial, would be allowed along the interior road connecting Chair Road to Castle Hain Road. So, essentially, fronting vertical mixed use, we would have the ground-level retail or commercial, and then the residential above that, which we, we think would help with the, the overall design of the project, and it would also complement the, on the other side of the Collector Road, the retail and office and mixed use on that component. So, I think the idea would be to have a corridor in there that would provide both commercial and residential, and I think it would make for a more interesting development.
And is there any anticipated mixed use or commercial-type use along Chair Road on the orange pod, not the yellow pod, but the orange pod?
No, sir. No, sir. It would, it would have to front or be on the, the new Collector Road.
And, and while I understand there's a lot of design work yet to be done, I understand from your presentation that access to all of these pods, we'll call them, would be off the new connector road. There would be none off of Chair Road or Castle Hain Road.
We are showing a site access to, you can see into the retail off of Chair Road, but that would be-
Into the retail portion.
Into the retail portion only. Yes, sir.
Oh, yes. Okay, I see that.
And that would be the, the only access that we're, we would be providing. And I think that would be really for convenience and also just to provide a second, a secondary access into the retail component.
Clark, can I say a follow-up question to your question?
Sure.
Will there be any sort of walk-up access on Chair Road that would, like, cause people to park on that road to try to, you know, access the, the retail or commercial? Or would that be, like, restricted? Does that question make sense?
I don't know if that level of detail has been, I may defer to my clients here. We are proposing, as shown here, the sidewalk along both sides of the connector road. Burrows, do you want?
I think, to be clear, you were saying, would we have parking along Chair Road?
I'm just thinking about some of the comments against this, and they were concerned about parking on Chair and then basically walking onto the site.
Parking would be internal, yeah. We'll just have that, maybe that access coming into the retail office, mixed-use area, but no, there won't be any parking along Chair Road.
I may have misunderstood the question. We're not proposing parking along Chair Road for the, for the project.
I have one, one more additional question.
Yes, sir.
And it relates to a comment that we've received related to the, the existing cemetery. What is the proposed setback from the existing cemetery?
Well, we're not, as you, I would say, for one, you, you'll see in that transition commercial area, we're not proposing any buildings at all. So, it-
It's a 20-foot buffer, am I correct? Is that what would be required along that property line?
Correct, the 20-foot transitional buffer.
And when you say there'll be no buildings, would there be any construction? Is there any grading? Is there anything related to, as, as pointed out in some of the comments that we've received, cemeteries are notorious for not staying within where they're supposed to be. So, there's concern about, you know, excavations and, and working around that cemetery. So, some separation, it would be appropriate in my mind to assure that there is some separation and no work around a certain area of the cemetery.
Yeah, so, we have a cemetery in River Bluffs that dates back to the 1800s, and so, we're pretty familiar with that. And we would, before we did anything in that area, we would obviously fence in that area for them, and we'd take ground-penetrating radar, there's services, they'll do that and go check the area out. We have mowed the area about a year ago. We do that again so you can access it, because it's pretty heavily undergrowth. But, yeah, yeah, we have one site over there, and our cemetery, we're just 30 feet away from all the other ones, you know? There's a crypt that we refurbished. So, yeah, we're familiar with that, and, you know, I love vegetated buffers and that kind of thing. We would try to do something really nice to, to, right now, it's, we mow it some, and it's been mowed some by others, but it needs some, some help.
Is it currently maintained?
Somewhat, yeah. And it's hard to get to right now because the dirt road historically come from Chair Road, you know, it grows in.
Yes, I've seen it.
We mowed it back, and it's already, you know, stuff grows quick, so it'll be a much better way to get to it. And I foresee, you know, a nice fence around it once we're sure of the boundaries. And with some vegetation buffer, we could do it, you know, we'll get with the folks that care most about it, and, you know, we're not just going to shove something down.
Is it your intention to maintain that access?
Yeah, I mean, the-
When I say maintain it, I mean-
We'll probably pave it.
Mow it and-
We'll, we'll pave, we'll pave, probably pave up my road through there, and have a gate that, you know, like, right now, we have a combination or a chain across here to keep vandals out as it is now. And I can foresee a combination or gate or something like that, just for the folks that belong back there.
All right. Thank you. Those were all my questions today.
Burrows, I got his questions also. What's your total build-out for River Bluffs and residential count?
So, our PUD there, I think, was 748 units. We'll reach 650 on the west side of the interstate. We do own some land on the east side that we haven't really planned anything on yet. We've got to get sewer under I-140, so we haven't, that's in the future. But the total build-out, 748, we're at 529 right now.
Another question is, based on staff's recommendation for continuance to October 3rd, is that something that you knew about or know about now, obviously? And is that something that you do not want to do or do?
We do not want to do that. We've, we've spent a year and a half with the MPO and, you know-
Just a question, just a question, that's all.
Yeah, I would say no, we'd like to go ahead and move forward with this project.
And lastly, for Matt, the density for the residential pods, 13.9- five, is that what I heard?
I think that was the, yes, sir, I think that was the calculation.
You came up with, I came up with a hundred and fifteen units based on what you said earlier, and you said the density in the transitional residential area, would that, would there be houses there?
The, up to eight units an acre.
Up to eight units an acre.
Yes, sir. And the thirteen point, I think, nine-five was predicated on, or that was before we discussed with the county about an opportunity to put the residential in the retail section. So again, the, the more residential that goes in the retail section will decrease the density because we're not, we're not proposing any more than a hundred and fifteen units.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
So we do have folks signed up in opposition, and if there's anyone else who wants to be heard, other than the applicant, in support of this, uh, application, they can be heard from during the five-minute rebuttal period. But we're going to move into the opposition at this time. I do have at least four people who've signed up to speak. We're going to go through the list. Uh, the opposition will be given their fifteen minutes, and we're going to start and just go right down. The first one I have is Marion Cray.
Hi, Ms. Clark.
Okay. Next, I have a Michael Reed. Please state your name and address.
Michael Reed, 127 McDougald Drive, Castle Hain.
Thanks, sir.
So we have this, we brought this whole sheet, which now is moot because they've changed some of this stuff since the community meeting, and you all have asked a lot of pertinent questions, and it seems like you're on the ball about this, but I just want to reiterate, reiterate on traffic. Um, during the community meeting, there was a, noth- nothing mentioned about the amount of traffic that's going to impact this area, and, uh, and I know they've changed it, so it may not be the same, but in your nine-hundred report that came out after the meeting, uh, the, uh, approximately morning, thirty-nine peak hours, forty and forty-nine in the afternoon, going to four-twenty and seven-ninety-six is ridiculous. So they've done a, a great job of getting traffic in and out of their area, but you go just south of Chair Road, it becomes a two-lane road, all the way almost to Twenty-third Street. Um, some of it has a turn lane, but some of it doesn't. Uh, and of course, then Twenty-third Street is terrible until you get to the airport. And north of, uh, GE is a two-lane road all the way to the Peanut. It's not a, it's not a roundabout, it's a peanut about, you know? And, uh, you've got Cas- you've got one-thirty-two going in there, which everybody on, excuse me, one-thirty-three coming in is causing them to back up. So you've got, you've got to look at this in a broader sense, not just for this development, I think, but for anything in Castle Hain. We don't want to end up like Market Street, and, uh, we don't want to do the cart before the horse like the Mayfair where they built it and then they had to shut the roads down and redo it. I think the roads need to be done first to, to accommodate building in the area. That's, that's it, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have a Logan Secord.
Uh, my name is Logan Secord. I live at twenty-nine-hundred Newtown Drive. If you would be able to put the site plan slide back up, that, that might be helpful. Uh, li- like the gentleman just said, I had information prepared, uh, except that, that information is no longer valid. Um, I want to take a step back from the application and the site plan right now and just take a note that I've got a good bit of development experience, and this is rather unorthodox. Uh, the information being presented today, uh, was not presented at the community meeting and was not in the agenda packet. I checked the agenda packet, uh, as of Monday, and so no publicly available information as to this new site plan that is theoretically being voted on tonight, um, has been provided. It, it's not even in the official application. That's unorthodox to do that, uh, to, to say the absolute minimum. I have historically, and you can check, spoken in support of a large variety of developments, and I told them, uh, at the community meeting, I, I want to be able to speak and support. Unfortunately, they were, for owning the property for ten years and having worked with the WMPO for supposedly eighteen months, um, very ambiguous or had not planned through their planned development. Uh, the community asked a variety of questions, uh, and they essentially made no commitments of what was going in here. They said even, uh, these proportions may change, and I believe I said, so you have a pie chart of, you know, it could be some amount of residential, some amount of, uh, retail, some amount of commercial grocery. And I said, how's that different from New Hanover County? And I said, that's not a planned development, we're just asking for more information there. Um, this new site plan seems to provide more additional information, but again, I have twenty-twenty contacts in, and I could not read that, so this is the first time right now live that I am actually reading the site plan, and I believe all of you are as well. The community had a variety of questions on what exactly would be the residential, you know, it said up to a hundred and fifteen units. They were unwilling to say, is it townhomes? Is it apartments? Is it just very large houses? What is going in here? And again, they were unwilling to provide any information. We've been led up to this point, up till six-twenty, uh, on a six o'clock hearing, uh, with a series of information and a large degree of ambiguity, and now we are being asked to make a decision based on this. I would advise that we maintain that this be continued to the October hearing, so the public has a chance to review this, so you have a chance to review this, so that we're not making a decision on the fly off of information that was not publicly available. At that point in time, again, I'm very pro-development. This additional information may assuage my concerns that it's going to negatively impact this community, and I can go back to the community who I've been in communication with, and it may assuage their concerns. I hope in a month that I'm back here speaking in support of this development, as I have spoken in favor of a variety of developments, because for all the reasons the application, uh, applicant has said, there's a lot of upside to this. It's just the way that this process has been done that has been very much somewhat of a sleight of hand, uh, and ambiguous, that does not set a proper precedent of how we want to develop. So I hope that we can continue this. We have the chance to have this in the public records, uh, for the October hearing, and then perhaps I'll be here, uh, speaking in favor. But for today, I, I can't say that I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have a Stephanie Galanis. Just state your name and address, please.
How are you all doing? I appreciate you letting me speak today. My name is Stephanie Galanis. I am at four-six-two-eight Castle Hain Road. I'm usually not good at something like this, but I'm going to be speaking on behalf of students, teachers, bus drivers, and our community. The builders have no idea what they are doing to the rural, small county. The trees help protect our homes from hurricane winds and flooding. Our roads are not equipped for all of the high volume of traffic, as I can't even get out of my property, which is on Castle Hain Road, so I just make a right turn now, because making a left is impossible. Our wildlife is no more, no deer, no rabbits, squirrels, or anything, along with our fly traps, along with the roadkill that has increased because wildlife has lost their homes. Being a volunteer worker in the school district for fourteen years, we are so overcrowded, the teachers, students, staff, and bus drivers are suffering along with no parking for existing students and staff. Where is the funding for our new high school and renovations, New Hanover High? Another elementary school and a middle school is needed. A rural town where we loved and now is destroyed by storage units, unaffordable homes, apartments, and townhomes, family dollars, and now they want to put in a large pickleball court, et cetera. These are not what's in need here. These are not what is helping our county, our neighborhood. We were small, quiet in country, a place to feel relaxed, and now it is just noise and clutter. There are older generations who have been here for hundreds of years, whose homes are handed generations to force to sell them to build a highway. Very selfish and sad. Castle Hain is not equipped with the infrastructure, nor our two-lane road. I'm glad that I did get pictures of the trees in two thousand and eight that are no longer I spoke to my son, who is eighteen years old. He feels the same way, especially about our overcrowded schools just as graduated from Laney this year. I don't hear any talk or speaking about adding schools to our small, very tiny community, but I do see hundreds of apartments and townhomes and buildings, et cetera, which are bringing a lot more people to Wilmington, New Hanover County, et cetera. I would like to see something done about that. Our, our crossing guard almost got hit because of the amount of traffic that there is. We need funding for our schools. We need a catwalk. We don't need another new library that they're building now, and four lots over to me, they're putting a firehouse. So what I see through my tiny, country, little window is no more. So I appreciate you all listening to me, and like I said, I'm speaking for our tiny community and a lot of elderly people that are not able to come here today, including the people that live behind Princess Place, that are being forced out of their homes because they're building a highway. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you. That concludes the list of people who've signed up to speak in opposition. Is there anyone else with the time left who would like to be heard in opposition? Sir, come to the podium, please. If you could, state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Emerson Whittit. I live at three-five-zero-two Emerson Drive. I just wanted to comment, I sent my comments to the, um, person on the staff as soon as we received letters. Um, it is true, as the gentleman said, that there are some changes. However, those changes that they spoke of, I don't think make a big difference. This issue of traffic, we've already, um, experienced an increase in traffic with River Bluff. So in essence, uh, I do not, uh, think that the, um, project, uh, that the, I, I don't think that the project's disadvantages override the advantages, or, as you people probably are aware, we've been trying since, uh, I guess nineteen eighty-four to get some additional infrastructure to the area. We have been, uh, recipients of problems with, uh, PFAS. So I see, uh, what the gen- gentlemen are proposing to do as a more of a benefit. Yes, we will have some traffic, but that's all, we, we, we already coping with, uh, that, uh, now, and, uh, we asked a question at their public meeting, they said that the DOT said that the, uh, changes that they would, uh, be required had been approved. So therefore, I'm, uh, more in support than against. Uh, just, just as an addition, uh, I've, I've been, um, at, at my residence for fifty-three years, and I've been in the community for eighty-one years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Three minutes and forty-one seconds left. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the application? All right, seeing none, there is a five-minute rebuttal period allowed to the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if I could have my presentation pulled back up, uh, just on the issue of this being a new site plan, this is not a new site plan. We have not changed the density. We have not changed any access points or proposed access. We haven't added any new uses. We haven't done anything that would impact the TIA in any way. Um, what we've done is clarified here that in that area, and this is all for the, the benefit of the development and the neighborhood, that that won't exceed eight units an acre. And we've limited three stories in height. That's not a chi- that's not a new site plan. This area, the transition commercial, again, we've said we're not going to put any commercial buildings there. That's, this isn't, uh, unorthodox, I think was the word. This, nothing, there's nothing unusual with making refinements and clarifications to a site plan. So, um, I just wanted to, to note that, and, um, I don't appreciate the comment about it being a sleight of hand, but I won't get into that. But this is all clarifications based on staff comments, discussions with staff, and also just makes for a better project. So, um, we would respectfully contend that, um, these clarifications to the site plan make for a better project, and, uh, we appreciate, uh, your consideration of this. We're not proposing any changes to the, all of the, the benefits that this development would bring in terms of the infrastructure, what the developer is going to provide and pay for in terms of the roadway improvements, the sewer benefits to the area and the opportunity to partner with the county and CFPUA. It's a great opportunity, and, uh, I think John wanted to address a few of the, the comments about the, uh, the traffic. Thank you.
Just on the issue of traffic, if I may, the, the TIA, um, was extremely wide in its scope. What I mean by that, it, it made a lot of assumptions. It assumed that River Bluffs was a full buildout. It assumed that the Providence Christian Academy, which has purchased the land at the end of Chair Road outside the gates of River Bluffs, the accounts from that school were taken into account for the TIA. The growth at GE was taken into account. What was also taken into account was the extreme delay of the Castle Hain Road Improvement Project that went from, as the gentleman indicated, from one-thirty-two, one-thirty-three, all the way down south to Twenty-third Street. Um, that project now is not, it, it was pushed back due to funding by DOT and is not scheduled until sometime, I think, in twenty-nine, but I don't, I don't want to misspeak. I think that's the latest I've heard. But the TIA assumed that that project was not happening. Um, the other thing to be clear, the traffic light at Castle Hain and Chair Road is in the near term, as in, we've already started working on that. Um, but the rest of this development can occur without the aforementioned improvements being made. So I just want to make sure that that was also specified. Um, and then as to the last point, I would just refer to Ms. Dos's presentation that indicated, I think, the projection on the part of county planning is eleven new school students related to this potential project. Thank you.
There's still a minute forty-five left. Is there anything else from the applicant?
Yeah, I have, I have a little bit of heartburn about changing things from the community meeting. I thought it was the whole purpose, was to have a community meeting to get input from the community and make changes based on what they asked about, and that's what we did. You know, nothing underhanded about it, and then we made changes based on what staff suggested. And I've always found that staff, they're the pros, and I thought their suggestions were very good, and we took them and accommodated them. So, I mean, we're not trying to slide something underneath the table, and, you know, I appreciate what the staff, working with us and what they brought forward, and so, um, you know, I don't think there's anything earth-shattering that we changed on the plan sort of that benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a five-minute rebuttal period that's offered to the opposition. Would anyone from the opposition care to speak during this period? All right, sir?
Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't know that Shady is quite right, but at the community meeting, there was a lot of backpedaling, it seemed like, going on. They couldn't answer specific questions. Uh, we didn't know anything about the amount of traffic. There were some questions I know couldn't be answered, because I know when you do this kind of a thing, you're putting up retail space and it's, and as we build it, they will come, kind of a thing. They don't have people lined up yet, it's too far away. Um, so who knows what's going to go in there, but as far as the grocery store goes, you know, there's a food line up the street, there's an IGA up the street within a couple of miles. If you put a Harris Teeter in there, and it's not, people in Castle Hain aren't going to, they're still going to go to food line, it's just too high. So, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with that, they don't, but, uh, the traffic really is the big issue, and, uh, I'm sorry if you guys felt slighted by him, but I don't, I don't know that he meant, you know, you were being that awful, but there really was- that awful, but there really was a lot of, it seemed like backpedaling at the community meeting, uh, as far as answering questions. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Still about four minutes left.
So, uh, hello again. I'm here as just trying to be somebody to serve my community. And I think it's a simple and reasonable request. I'm here, in general, most often times, speaking in support of developments, uh, because I believe they are good for the community. I expect, once I have the ability to adjust the information and I can provide that same information which was provided here to the community, that the community may be here alongside me in support of this. I'm not saying don't approve the project. I'm specifically saying you should not deny the project. Right? I think this is a good project. However, as a matter of due process and simple procedure, I think a one-month delay in order to process the information and ensure it's in the best interest of the community provides no impact to the costs of this developer. Certainly, no major procurement's going to happen in the next month. Uh, I think this is a very reasonable request. Again, I'm not saying that I am opposed to this project. I'm saying up until this point, we lacked information. Information has been provided tonight. Let us take the time to digest it and then come back in a month. And perhaps then there's no contention at all and it's an easy vote. Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition? All right. With no one else signed up and no one else approaching or indicating that they'd like to be heard, we'll move to, uh, close the public hearing. If that's okay with the rest of the board?
Mr. Tarrant, I will mention if there is the possibility that the planning board would continue this item, the public hearing should remain open, um, to allow for the presentation of additional evidence in October. So you may want to have some board discussion before the public hearing is officially closed.
Thank you very much, Ms. Roth. So we haven't closed the public hearing. There hasn't been a motion. We haven't done that. And Ms. Roth has astutely pointed out that if we are going to move forward with the continuance, that we should leave that open. So I guess the first order of business for us as a board would be to have that discussion.
Mr. Chair, I, I believe it's reasonable to not close the public hearing until we've had our discussion. Typically, we, we, we have, we have heard tonight's public hearing. Now, we would typically have discussions and, and discuss. And then after that discussion, if we decide to move forward, uh, with the continuance, we can address it there, or if we decide to move forward with a recommendation, uh, to the board commissioners, we can, we recommend at that time. So I would say we leave it open until we have our discussion.
That's fine. So let's discuss. I think that's the point. It's time to, to have that discussion. If I, if I could, and I'll just go ahead and lead us off. Mr. Seacord, can I call you back up for a second? Because I think it's important. I know you've mentioned a few times that you wish you'd had more of an opportunity to, to digest and or review certain information and I think it's, be helpful for this board if you could just let us know exactly what information you heard tonight or you were provided tonight that you'd like some additional time to review.
Yeah. So originally, uh, it was not informed what the residential portion of this project would be. We asked the broadest questions of, you know, you, you have a maximum number of units, up to, I believe, one fifteen. Uh, but you have not specified what type of units there are, roughly what the price range is, you know. Well, River Bluffs is, you know, a asset to this community and to the city. Uh, this is a lower-income area and there were community members who were concerned about having an equivalent River Bluffs right next to them that would effectively, you know, start pushing them out of this area of having very large, very high, uh, priced homes in this area. I recognize, you know, depending on what this is, if it's sale or if it's rent, that part of that is to be determined by market forces. But I want to be sure, and the community wants to be sure, that they're not going to be pushed out of this area by, say, a very high-end luxury development right next to a generally lower-income area. Houses that are only available to the top ten percent increase supply, but they don't assist with our affordability crisis, our housing supply crisis. Per the two thousand and twenty-two housing assessment, we have issues because people in the area meanian income bands below eighty percent are struggling severely at finding housing. So if this development, which was basically a pie chart, uh, had no information on what exactly would be here, we had no information to judge. Is this actually going to assist with our housing supply? Is it actually going to be beneficial and in harmony with the neighbors? It seems that there's going to be a row of houses that are neighboring, which ostensibly would prevent there being too large of an impact as opposed to a full neighborhood of very large, single-family homes with, it looks like from the presentation, a mix of townhomes or slash apartments at the maximum of three stories. That's new information. That's better information, but something that I need to digest and ask, uh, questions and then go back to the community, who I've got about ten or eleven, uh, community members in a group text, uh, you know, and inform them, and they may have follow-up questions. So this is an improvement, but as to is this in harmony with the neighborhood? I've yet to determine that based on the application that was publicly available. Based on this, I am becoming more confident, but not confident enough, because I can have my opinion, but the community may not share that opinion. Hopefully, that answers your question.
No, I appreciate you at least putting in the context what some of the concerns were.
Yes, sir. I, I appreciate you, uh, articulating your, your concern so well. Uh, I, I don't remember where you live, but do you live, when you say the community, are you talking about the immediate?
Yes, I'm talking about, uh, the immediate community for context. My pastor said a couple months ago, leverage what you have for the community, community being Wilmington. I am very familiar with planning and zoning. This is what I do to volunteer, so.
And you live on Newtown Drive, I believe?
I live on Newtown Drive.
That's in North Chase?
That's correct.
And you access that by Highway one thirty-two?
Mm-hmm.
Which is about, I don't know, two miles is drive time?
Yeah, it's about two miles.
Okay.
I came to the community meeting to gain more information, to listen to the public, be able to understand, you know, is this development going to be in their best interest? Because I don't know how to fix my fridge, so I call an electrician. I don't know how to fix my toilet, so I call a plumber. The community members, they don't know zoning, so I'm able to come in and identify is this in their best interest? Now, some of these things, for example, the neighborhood was very excited to have the grocery store, uh, and to have some retail. Uh, the potential for some walkability and some sidewalks in the future, which, you know, they do some sidewalks. The city would have to do more. That excited them, right? So there are things that are good about this and the community's excited about this, and I'm excited about this because for the city of Wilmington, it's going to reduce traffic overall because people aren't going to have to drive so much to get to their general shopping. The residential aspect, which up until right now, we had no information on type or quantity, was the main concern.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir.
May I ask, um, may I ask the attorney for the, uh, applicant to come back up, please?
Yes, sir.
So when, when you were in the second part of your presentation during rebuttal, you were mentioning the changes that had resulted from the community discussion and from, uh, discussions with the planning staff. And you mentioned that, uh, I believe you circled a couple of areas there on the west side of the property.
Yes, sir.
That, again, what, what changed there? Did you add density or did you add? You took density away?
We took density away, yes, sir. So we limited that western portion of the residential pod to a maximum of eight units an acre. Whereas the PD ordinance, I believe, allows up to seventeen units an acre. We're not approaching that in density at a hundred and fifteen for the overall site. So we, but in discussions with staff, in order to provide roughly a hundred and fifty feet or so of transition between what you would say is the more dense residential to the existing, single-family residential on Emerson, we are provi- are proposing to provide a hundred and fifty feet or so of what we're calling just residential, tran- transitional residential where it will be maximum of eight units an acre and it will be limited to three stories in height. And so, that was really based upon staff comments and we're, we're glad to do it. I think it's, it's a good, it's a good mo- it's a good clarification. It's actually a reduction or a limitation on the originally proposed use.
Put it in context, so that hatched area is a hundred and fifty?
I'm sorry.
Is a hundred and fifty feet deep approximately? So that means you'd have to have a two hundred and ninety-foot long area to make an acre. So that'd be eight units and two hundred and ninety feet bordering those peo- those houses. And it's very densely wooded. The trees are eighty feet tall, so that's basically no impact at all. And, you know, the folks at the meeting wanted to know where the ponds were going to be, how the roads were going to be, the drainage. We even got a rezon. We didn't even talk to an engineer about it yet. We've done very limited survey and, I mean, I'm about to cart for the horse. We couldn't answer questions, you know. I don't know what the units are going to look like. I mean, we haven't designed them. We don't know exactly till we get it passed. I didn't know if it was going to be eight units per acre or thirteen, you know, so. Those are the kind of questions we couldn't answer. And you can't till you get, you know. And y'all, some of y'all go through permitting, you know, you have a plan and then you go through DWQ and the county and everybody and it gets changed and then we explain that to them. Um, that's the process.
So is, if I understand it correctly, just based on the location of where you're making those changes, was that as a result of an accommodation to concerns?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, it's, yeah, accommodation.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore?
So hearing all the comments tonight, this is the reason I asked staff this question earlier, and I'm going to kind of read this because I think it's important for the planning board to hear this and I think it kind of draws us back to what we've seen. So this is essentially the overview of the PD district. It's a type of conditional zoning district that includes a site-specific design, a master plan, and mutually agreed upon conditions of which we have that can be attached. Master plans for PD districts are intended to be a bubble format, so bubble of nature, which is what we have, to illustrate the general location and intensity of the land uses within the development, which is what we have. Plan developments must be constructed in accordance with the standards established in the approved master plan and must comply with all other applicable development regulations, stormwater, landscaping, roadways, parking. Of course, that will come later. Compliance with the master plan and other applicable regulations is verified during the review of a site-specific development proposal. I think we need to really draw back to what a PD district is and why we have it set up in the ordinance. So I just want to make that clear and Rebecca, from a staff perspective, if this goes through this board and is approved and moves forward, goes to the commissioner and is approved and moves forward, the applicant from that point forward, what is kind of their general, ten-thousand-altitude view pathway? They have to come back in front of staff to do what?
They would submit, um, a site plan and, and generally it would be, um, multiple site plans. Um, what we have seen is that each of the bubbles, um, on their concept plan generally requires their own site plan. They come for, they submit it to staff. It goes through our technical review committee where planning staff looks to see if it meets all of our development standards, um, some of the ones you mentioned, tree retention, landscaping, parking. Um, it also goes, um, during that time in front of our engineering department, um, fire services. Um, NCDOT has additional opportunities for review and it has to meet all of those local and state standards uh, before the site plan is approved by TRC, um, and they're able to move forward with construction of a project.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Ross. Uh, but during that process, there's no public review of the developed site plan?
Correct. It's an administrative approval process by staff.
Thank you.
So this time, does the board have any discussion as it pertains to the application? And where we are on this? I mean, there's been some discussion as far as the continuance. There's been, and we've heard from the opposition as far as some of their concerns. We obviously have a, you know, an updated and revised site plan to consider. Um, I think we should probably move into some discussion here as to what we want to do, um, with this application at this point. Mr. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I've been pretty quiet up to now, trying to take it all in. I really appreciate the, the public coming out and voicing their concerns. This, uh, planning board, you know, our role is to look at things at a fairly high level and conceptual level and, and as our county gets older, as it changes, as it progresses, things change and zoning that was done thirty, forty, fifty years ago, whatever applies, um, you know, needs to be updated. That's why we have rezoning hearings and have this proc- and have this process. So I, I'm very familiar with Castle Hain Road. I'm very familiar with Chair Road. Uh, I do know the developers, uh, as well. Uh, and they're local individuals who care greatly about their community. Um, but when I look very broadly at, at, uh, the area and that we have this, this parcel of land that abuts I- one forty in an area that's fairly underserved and has inadequate DOT improvements that, uh, probably many of you in here experience every day, that the developer is going to improve this property, give services and amenities to the greater community. They're going to spend their money to improve the roads, traffic patterns, lighting, timing that should benefit everybody. They're going to put in a stormwater system that is good for the environment. And they just acknowledged that they listened to the community feedback and I believe they said they gave up eight units of density to provide a buffer to their neighbors. So when I hear all of this, it sounds like this is a positive thing. And, you know, whether, they can't answer whether it's a food line or a Harris Teeter is not part of the scope of what we do here at the planning board. Um, as Cameron asked staff, um, to, um, you know, what are the next process, the, the process, excuse me? Um, there's still quite of, and quite a bit of intense technical scrutiny that the developers will be required to go through. Um, I appreciate my fellow, uh, board member, uh, Mr. Hip, asking about the grading near the cemetery site. I think that's a very valid concern. And, but th- those are the level of details that are necessary and will get addressed through the process. But when I look at a broad brush of whether this property should be rezoned to PD, I think it absolutely should be and we should vote on it tonight in the affirmative because I don't really know what's going to change.
Mr. Hines? Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and agree with you. I, I think the traffic considerations, the infrastructure considerations, the transitional areas, I think staff did the right thing.
the transitional areas, I think staff did the right thing when they said, "We don't have enough information." And I appreciate the concerns of the timing of getting this information. We did get it before, the planning board did get it before six o'clock today. So we've had a little bit of time to kind of think about that. So I do appreciate your concerns with, hey, we're just processing this right now. But I think it is our job as the board to know if we have enough information to make a recommendation to the commissioners. And I think if there's concern from the community, there's, you know, a month to digest that and bring that to the commissioners' meeting in October if there really, you know, is still strong opposition. But I think, you know, the comments from staff were, in my opinion, adequately addressed. I think this is a positive project.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to thank the people who came out both for and against the project. It takes time, it's inconvenient, and appreciate you participating in the process. I've got three or four thoughts on this. One, the PD zoning goes back a few decades in New Hanover County, but it's still one of the newer ones. And two of the first PD projects in the county were landfall and north chase and they turned out pretty well. Reputations are not built on what you're going to do. Reputations are built on what you have done. And when I look at River Bluffs, that wasn't even a speculative investment. Looking back to 2007, I'd say that with the timing and the upfront cost in infrastructure, it was a risky investment. But not only did it adhere to the zoning requirements, it exceeded them. There are, when you drive back in there, there are development standards self-imposed that exceed anything else around it. When I look at this site plan, it's twenty-seven acres and they're going to run a road right through it and put a stoplight. That stoplight's a few hundred thousand dollars, just the stoplight, to run a road through this to improve ingress and egress of that twenty-seven acres and to help the traffic flow around Chair Road and Castle Hain Road. It's going to be an improvement. Now, as far as the PD zoning and the questions that are open, that's part of why PD zoning was envisioned to begin with, to allow people to have some flexibility so with the exact locations of things. But at the end of it, they've got to come out with the mixture and the percentages and the square footage that they go into it with. The risk to the community, if we could call it a risk, were just mitigated by the additional buffer on the park where it actually abuts contiguous properties. I just don't see much way to improve this project. To the question of how is this housing going to look? It's not going to be a hundred and fifteen units on twenty-seven acres of single-family. I'll promise you that. It will involve a mixed-use multifamily component. But bearing in mind the cost of the infrastructure, whatever goes there is going to be a very, very good product. Number one, out of necessity, but number two, based on what has been done down the road on River Bluffs. It's at a commercial node on an I-140 interchange, Castle Hain Road. I wish it was four lanes all the way. It will come. But if you're going to have commercial development anywhere around, this is the type of place that you're going to do it. And having a planned development zoning here certainly steps up the game to what some other uses could have been. Last year, we voted to rezone some land about a half mile up, also fronting on Castle Hain Road and near residential development for flex space units. This isn't going to be a group of metal buildings. This is going to be a really nice-looking project. So I guess you see where my thoughts are.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hip.
As Mr. Matthew said, I just mentioned, I've got several comments in my head too. The first is, I understand the public's concerns for what's going to happen here. Normally, they would love to see a site plan and know where the stormwater ponds are going to go and know where the one-story buildings are going to go and the two-story buildings are going to go. The application before us tonight doesn't require that. And that's what Mr. Moore referred to. That's what the PD zoning. The PD zoning allows more flexibility, therefore it doesn't provide a lot of specificity. So I think our job is to look at what was being presented tonight and to see if it met the level of the PD ordinance and then make a recommendation to the board of commissioners. My review of staff's original comments were they needed more information, more clarification on, in particular, the mix of commercial and residential uses. What I've seen tonight gives me much better understanding about how the commercial is going to be integrated into that residential piece. I also understand that a section called retail is now going to include potentially some residential. From the requirements of the PD zoning, the PD ordinance, I feel that's the information that we need and I feel it has been presented. So I feel like the concerns we originally heard from staff about clarifications has been addressed tonight. And I feel like too, that our job to make a recommendation can be made based on that clarified information.
Thank you, Ms. Hip. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Moore.
Do we need to make a motion to close the public hearing based on?
Well, we will have to do that. I mean, do I need to call the applicant up and have the applicant direct us as to whether or not they would like us to move forward with the vote before, or a vote before we do that?
I think that would be an appropriate suggestion.
All right. If I could have Representative the applicant? Mr. Nichols, would you like to move for a continuance, withdraw your application, or move forward with a vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. We would like to move forward this evening if it pleases the board. And we thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, if the board is not inclined to move to continue the motion, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no opposed. Public hearing is closed. We'll now entertain a motion if there is one.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Moore.
And Rebecca, before I make this motion, do I also need to make in this motion the terms and conditions of the proposed master development terms and conditions along with that as supplemental to the motion?
The motion would include either a recommendation of approval or denial of the concept plan and terms and conditions. It's all part of the rezoning request.
Gotcha. I see it. Okay. I move to recommend approval of the proposed PD rezoning with the attached terms and condition documents. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the project provides for the types and mixture of uses recommended at the community mixed-use and general residential place types and the project will create a new commercial node in close proximity to nearby residents. I also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because of the project provides additional housing diversity to the area and increased vehicular and pedestrian circulation.
Second.
This motion on the table has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for approval carries. Give everybody a moment who is here for matter one to exit.
Mr. Chair, I'll step aside in anticipation of the second.
Yep. That is agreeable. Mr. Hip will not participate by virtue of our vote to excuse him due to a conflict at the outset of our meeting. At this time, we'll move into matter two, which is a public hearing. It's a rezoning request Z-24-18. A request by Seth Hunt with Source Contracting LLC applicant on behalf of Storehouse Holdings LLC property owners to rezone approximately .47 acres located at 1132 South Seabreeze Road from the CZDR-7 Conditional Residential Moderate Density District to CZDB-2 Regional Business for the use of contractor office and offices for private business and professional activities. At this time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. The applicant is requesting to rezon approximately 0.44 acres from a conditional R-7 residential district to a conditional B-2 regional business district for an eighty-nine-hundred-square-foot office building. As you may recall, this parcel was rezoned to a conditional R-7 in February of this year. The aerial photography shows the site is bordered to the south by an existing bed and breakfast and the site is on the banks of the intercoastal waterway. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. Here's an example of what you might see of residential development in the Seabreeze area. And here's an example of a three-story office building with parking underneath on Wrightsville Beach. The applicant's proposed concept plan includes a three-story office building with a boardwalk to be used by employees and customers. The site plan shows the building setback an extra twenty-five feet from the required seventy-five-foot conservation resource setback for a total of a hundred feet from the mean-high waterline. The concept plan also shows parking on the site in front of and under the principal structure. There is also proposed satellite parking on a B-2 lot across the street that is not part of this rezoning. Parking lots are permitted in B-2 by right. Access to the site is along South Seabreeze Road. There is a recommended condition for the applicant to work with NC DOT to install signage and striping for a pedestrian crosswalk for the satellite parking. There are a few projects under development in the vicinity. The proposed development would generate approximately fifteen AM and nineteen PM peak hour trips. This property is located in the historic Seabreeze community along South Seabreeze Road. This area was the focus of the Seabreeze small-area plan created in 1989. The recommendations for the area included a revitalization of the businesses and a redevelopment of the waterfront. In February of 2024, a parcel at the corner of South Seabreeze Road and Carolina Beach Road was rezoned from residential to business and at the same meeting, this parcel was rezoned from business to residential, indicating a shift in the commercial and residential development patterns for the Seabreeze area. The existing land uses in the area include a mix of single-family dwellings and boat storage. The 2016 comprehensive plan classifies this area as community mixed-use. This project is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan's recommendations for properties that are located in the community mixed-use place type. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the 2016 comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Staff found that the proposed conditional B-2 district is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan because the district is in line with the uses that are appropriate for properties located in the community mixed-use place type. As a result, staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning along with the following conditions encompassing tree preservation, use, outdoor storage, parking, and a pedestrian connection. Staff have received additional public comments which were provided to the board earlier today. Lastly, I'll add that if approved, development would be subject to technical review committee and zoning compliance review processes in order to ensure full compliance with all ordinance requirements. That concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Tim Low is here with county engineering to answer any questions that may come up under that topic. This concludes, I already said that, the applicant is here to prepare a presentation as well.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for staff at this time? Mr. Moore.
Zach, remind me on the rezoning of this property before going from B-2 to R-7. What were the proposed conditions on there? I remember something about some tree proposed conditions?
Yes, sir. There was a condition requiring the tree, the two live oaks on the site. There's two more that are down by the water that aren't considered significant trees. But in a B-2 district, they would be required to get a tree removal permit to remove those two trees and if it goes to a residential district that's under an acre, they would not be required to get a permit. So one of the conditions that was approved as part of the rezoning was to retain those trees.
Would you mind pulling back up the site plan and just showcasing those for us?
Yes, sir.
Please.
So one of the trees is here. The fifty-inch diameter breast height would be considered a specimen oak along with this one. That threshold is at thirty-six inches. And these two down by the water, the twenty-two-inch diameter would be considered significant and then the fifteen-inch would just be considered documented.
Okay, thank you. I just remember that being a thing when we looked at this.
Yes, sir.
A couple months ago. Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Just like to remind the applicant, you have fifteen minutes. There'll be fifteen minutes allowed for opposition with five-minute respective rebuttal periods.
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the planning board. My name is Madeline Williams. I'm an attorney with Warden Smith and I'm here on behalf of the applicant tonight, Source Contracting. Also with me here tonight as a representative of the applicant is Seth Hunt as well as Brad Schuler and Tim Klink-Scales from Paramount Engineering. We also have Toby Keaton here with Cursing Architecture. As I move through the presentation, if you have questions, please feel free to interrupt me. I'm happy to answer those as you have them. Also, if there's other questions you feel are better suited for the other folks that are with me, please let me know. Okay, so similar to staff's presentation, this is a GIS overlay of the property. Our property is highlighted in red, of course. To the south of the property is a bed and breakfast that's been permitted. To the north of our property, you can see there's a small parcel. Not, it's pretty much undevelopable based on the size of it. But to the north of that, there is a residential structure that predates dating. To the west of the property is some boat storage. And then the parcel directly across from the street is also owned by our client and that's where the proposed parking would be. So as discussed, the surrounding property in this area is B-2. As this was previously zoned, the site was also B-2. It was recently rezoned to R-7 for a maximum of two single-family homes. Our client acquired the property in May. I'm not sure of the specifics of why the residential homes were constructed, but either way, our client now owns it and is proposing what's before you tonight. So part of the reason that we're requesting a rezoning back to B-2 is consistency with the surrounding zoning that's there now. There are some residential properties that are, as you can see, to the south on Seabreeze, but the surrounding property immediately around this subject site is all B-2. Here's our concept plan. As you can see, in this area, there is the hundred-foot conservation setback as opposed to what's currently required now under the R-7 zoning, which is a seventy-five-foot setback. Mr. Moore, to your question, the current restrictions on the R-7 zoning are to preserve the two live oaks that are closer to Seabreeze. We have worked with staff and are agreeable to a condition that would protect all four live oaks on the property, so not just the two that are currently required, but also the ones that are closer to the water. What we've done here in looking at the comprehensive plan as well as the surrounding area is we did look at all the B-2 uses, but however, we've, as you can tell, significantly narrowed the uses that we've proposed for this site. So as part of this conditional rezoning, we would request that the only two uses be permitted are the contractor office and then the offices for private business. and then the offices for private business and professional activities. Our client's goal here is more so in the offices for private businesses and professional activities. They are a construction business that focuses primarily on residential projects. They do do some mixed-use projects and some straight commercial, but the primary focus is residential. So, this would be an area for their employees. They have approximately fifteen employees. The controller, the finance folks, their general manager, those are the folks that would be in this office, as well as client visits, and any investors. Here is the site plan, and similar to staff, I wanted to call out a few things for the board's consideration. Starting on the left-hand side, we would be incorporating a pedestrian sidewalk that would connect over to the parcel that's the subject of this rezoning. We have agreed to, subject to NC DOT's approval, a crosswalk across Seabreeze that would have signage and striping. Again, part of, one of the conditions is about, in order to satisfy the parking requirements, there would be parking lot, this parking lot too that you see, that would have some parking spaces on this side. Plan is to use pervious, a pervious surface there. Going over to the subject lot, there would be additional parking that is under the building. Again, preserving those two live oaks that are closest to Seabreeze and the two live oaks that are closer to the water. There is a proposed boardwalk that would just connect the building to the intercoastal waterway. That boardwalk would only be for use by the employees and clients of Source Contracting. At the community meeting, we did hear some feedback from the property to the south that's permitted as a bed and breakfast about some separation and maybe concerns with noise and other items. So after the community meeting, we did update the site plan to include this six-foot fence between the bed and breakfast and our property. And moving on to the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, this area is located in the place type for community mixed use. And what's outlined in the orange box, that's our, that's our property. As you can see, not only our property, but the surrounding area is also in the community mixed use place type. The request to the B two zoning is consistent with the community mixed use place type. It aligns with the purposes and intent of that place type, and this place type is specifically intended for small-scale, compact, mixed-use developments. And one of the types of uses that is appropriate for this place type is the office use, which is what we're proposing. This proposal also aligns, excuse me, with the county's strategic plan to reduce the number of residential uses that are in a flood zone of this type. I believe that was one of the concerns that was noted in the previous rezoning of putting a residential use in this flood zone. This, what we're proposing tonight would be a commercial use. Additionally, with this commercial use, there is the greater conservation setback. So again, we'd be going from seventy-five to a hundred, and we're also proposing, in line with the county's goals of tree preservation, to protect all the live oaks, even the ones that are not specimen. Here is another GIS slide, and I believe this was mentioned by staff as well. Our area is the site that's in blue, just highlighted some of the surrounding uses that are also commercial. So there's the seasonal jet ski rentals, as well as the surrounding boat trailer. You can see some of that storage in that area. Also, to the front of Seabreeze, so on the same road, but in between North Seabreeze and South Seabreeze, was recently rezoned from R fifteen to the commercial business park that will, you know, eventually have some commercial uses as well. It's my understanding that that project was also subject to a TIA, so we expect there'll be some improvements as a result of that. And then, even more recently, in July, the commissioners approved at the top of Seabreeze a rezoning from R fifteen to CB for retail sales. And I believe that the property owner's goal there is a bait and tackle shop. So, with the evolving nature of the community, I know there is some comments that we'll likely hear about this area is residential. While there are residences here, the comp plan anticipates community mixed use. What we're proposing is a commercial use, and in addition to the other commercial uses that are in the area, we believe it aligns with the comp plan's goals. Here are the conditions that Mr. Dickerson showed to you as well. I just wanted to highlight them again. Again, we're proposing that our use be generally consistent with the site plan. We've incorporated, although not required, because there's commercial uses, excuse me, commercially zoned properties on either side of us. It wouldn't require setbacks. We've included some, some small setbacks there, as well as some buffers. We've narrowed it to just these two uses out of the B two permitted uses. Don't anticipate any outdoor storage of construction materials on the site and have agreed to a condition that would restrict that. Again, protecting all of the live oaks on the property, including the ones that are not specimen. Working on the crosswalk, subject to NC DOT's approval, and then the parking requirements. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or if there's any other questions that could be answered by the applicant or the design team. We're interested and happy to answer those.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? All right, I think we're good.
Thank you.
I do have folks that have signed up in opposition. I'm gonna go through, just like we did with the first matter, I'm gonna go through those in order. I do have time that was left for the applicant, if there was anybody else who did wish to speak before I move on. All right. First up, we have a Michael Dinkins.
Good evening. I'm Michael Dinkins. Owner of eleven twenty-four South Seabreeze with my elderly family members, who I take care of twenty-four seven. Appreciate the opportunity. First of all, let's clarify something. I think we are designated as a guest house, not a bed and breakfast. Big distinction there. We credit Bill Castor with helping us being able to even get the building built there, the twenty-five years ago that we didn't. We appreciate Mr. Hunt's concept. It's a beautiful building, but we don't think it adds any balance, any harmony to our existing primarily residential beachfront setting. As he stated, he's a, primarily a residential contractor. Would have been neat to see a more residentially looking building there. And that's enough said. I really don't know the parameters which you guys decide on a yea or nay. Excuse me, I'm just getting over pneumonia, but I had to be here, just to voice my opposition to it. You know, another thing is, a nine thousand square foot building, we understand the B two setbacks, you know, virtually zero. We appreciate, you know, they're putting their six-foot wall up and maybe adding a little setback, but a fifty-foot building on a half-acre lot with approximately twenty-five, parking lots just seems to be a bit in excess for that area. That's all I really think I need to say. My, my neighbors are a bit more versed than what's going on. As I say, I spend most of my time taking care of those elderly folks. So, again, just expressing our opposition to the proposed rezoning. We're quite happy with that conditional R seven. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Next, I have a Kate Scanlon.
Good evening. My name is Kate Scanlon. I live at ten sixty-eight South Seabreeze Road, and I also own property at ten forty, ten fifty South Seabreeze, as well as ten oh oh one and ten twenty-four North Seabreeze. So I'm very invested in the long term of this area. I don't believe that the applicant has sufficiently demonstrated what has changed, per the application, to the area to justify a rezon. I would assume that the board does not make decisions solely based on what a new owner would like to have, especially considering that this decision was only made seven months ago. While the owners may have changed during this time, the rationale for the change to R seven, seven months ago, has not changed. This part of Seabreeze is a growing residential area, and the rezon to R seven does fit the area. The applicant states that the rezon fits the community mixed use designation. We've been here many times talking about this community mixed use, particularly down at the, at the eastern end of Seabreeze. I'd just like to remind everybody one that Seabreeze was zoned to B two in nineteen seventy-one. Since nineteen seventy-one, there has been zero commercial buildings built in Seabreeze. You had the nineteen eighty-nine plan that was intended to help revitalize the area. Nothing came of that. Every time a significant amount of parcels come together, they try, many have tried to make it into a commercial zone, and it hasn't been successful, and it hasn't been successful because of building in the VE flood zone, the cost of building in the flood zone. And frankly, it was also B two, you know, to really benefit the folks and the families that had been living in the area for over a hundred years when everything was wiped out back in the sixties. And so, we're not, I keep wondering, why do we keep trying to put a square peg into a round hole? Because the, yes, the adjacent properties are zoned B two, and in the, you know, the immediate area, you have B two. But there are only, so if we're gonna build this nine, again, nine, almost, well, it might be like just shy of nine thousand square feet, three stories above ground, the six-foot buffer is nice, but it's a fifty, it's a very tall building. So I don't really think the buffer's gonna do a whole lot. So when we look at community mixed use, to me, you also have to ask, well, what else is going to be built in the area that also justifies or supports a community mixed use? There are only five other B two properties in that part of Seabreeze that have more, that are more than ten thousand square feet. I'm gonna use ten thousand square feet because I think it's reasonable if you're gonna build some type of brick and mortar business that you're gonna probably need at least ten thousand square feet. There's only five. I own two of them. One of them, another of them is borders, the long border is residential. The eastern part of it is also wetlands, and then you're left with two other properties, both of which had been owned by longtime Seabreeze families. They haven't sold before. Maybe they'll sell at this point. But if we keep also going back, because I've heard this before, well, people can put the properties together. It's been fifty years. It's been fifty years at B two. I think giving the area more than, you know, zoning it to R seven, I think giving it more than seven months to see if something can be successful is reasonable. And also, if you aren't aware of the details, the property went on the market on March twentieth. Three weeks later, it went under contract. It was also listed several different ways to try to sell it. Went under contract three weeks later and then was sold, you know, four weeks or five weeks or so after that. We're not talking about a property that was, you know, languished on the market for months and months and months. So, you're right, we don't know what happened with the prior owners. But again, I'm really hoping that the board is looking at what is the overall use of the area. And I'd just like to give a couple of more statistics. You know, there are, when you look at the residential that's actual use, because there are B two properties that have homes on them. And again, that's been trying to work with what essentially people are kind of stuck with, which is B two. So you say things and you build things because it's, you know, a guest home when it's a vacation home. But out of the total of twenty-six point four acres in what I call lower Seabreeze, you only have one point four acres that is currently being used as B two. And I don't think anybody thought that boat storage, trailers, and truck storage was really what anybody had in mind with community mixed use. So that one point four acres generates five percent of the tax value, which is just slightly under two million dollars. For residential, you have a total of twenty-two point five acres that generates a tax value of about eleven point three million dollars. So, yes, there are a couple of properties around there that are zoned B two. But again, when you look at where Seabreeze has somewhat slowly been going over the years, it is towards residential. And, you know, I'll echo my neighbor, Michael, saying like, y'all have built some nice houses. Can you just, you know, build some more? I'd also just like to say that I'm a little surprised they didn't show their photos of the building. You can kind of get a better idea of the scale. This was on their Facebook, their Facebook page on August seventh, which was Don't Sleep on Source Contracting. This is a sneak peek of what our new custom office building is going to look like. It is a very nice building, and one more thing that I would like to say, they mentioned that, you know, the, the building, not building residential in the flood zone. I think that density in the flood zone matters, and again, a nine thousand square foot building with twenty-five parking spots versus one to two homes with what, maybe four parking spots? I'd say the density is pretty different between the two of them. So with that, I'll end my comments. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Kathy Tyley?
Hi, my name is Kathy Tyley. I live at ten fifty-six South Seabreeze Road. I stood in support of the rezon to residential. As you know, and you've heard before, the B two's down there are there. They've been there since nineteen seventy-one when zoning came into being, I think. It was a, to try to help the community rebuild. Now, my, my neighbor Kate already, you know, told you, and you know, you've heard all of this before about Seabreeze. So there's no sense in really rehashing it, but I was happy to stand up, I mean, send my public comment in like, yeah, residential, we have a chance. We have a say in like rezoning something here, because we can't change the zoning, and we can't change the community mixed use. We are waiting. We are waiting, and Rebecca, you know, we're waiting for that review of the comprehensive plan because it needs to change down there, because the community is growing as residential, and we're stuck with this B two little, and even as you mentioned in your report, little chopped-up properties. Anyway, she laid it out why the community is more residential. But yet, staff recommends proving, finding it consistent with the comprehensive plan because it provides uses in line with the community mixed use. Community mixed use. I am opposed to the community mixed use down South Seabreeze Road and on that waterfront loop. Granted, there were two legitimate businesses here at the time, but two businesses does not a community mixed use make. If there is a correct use of that red marking on the future land use map in Seabreeze, it's along the Carolina Beach Road corridor only. It is one thing to have businesses that may actually provide essentials to the community along Carolina Beach Road. It's quite another to allow a huge commercial building to be erected between two typical Seabreeze homes on the waterfront. It's really tough to try to cast an old community with old subdivided properties ranging from point zero one acres to up, you know, to higher, into a new development mold like a community mixed use. Because, community, as you mentioned in your report, it's a small-scale, compact, mixed use, but it also is designed to attract as an attractor to visitors and residents. Its mile is supposed to be ideally to have sidewalks and pedestrian bike lanes, gathering spaces, multimodal. gathering spaces, multimodal travel possibilities, on and off-street parking, cultural and recreational spaces. These are things that the location of Seabreeze just cannot provide ever. So, the place type was assigned in the best intention. It was a second attempt after the small-area plan, which produced zero results in building the area. So, we're waiting for that future review and meanwhile, we need to deal with this request. So, regardless of whether this place-type assignment is right or wrong, this proposal in no way, shape, or form fits the intent of community mixed-use development. This building and this company, the company looks wonderful, their Facebook page, wow, they're building gorgeous homes. They treat their employees so well, they buy them trucks and cars and boats and it's wonderful. But this company will provide no goods or services to the Seabreeze community unless they decide to keep at R7 and build one or two beautiful homes on that lot, which they can in turn sell. It's waterfront property, it's gorgeous. Their employees do not live here and thus, they will not be walking to work. It does not provide or encourage public civic spaces or cultural resources. There's no recreational opportunity, other than for their employees, as they said. This is a standalone, very large office that will sit in between two homes. Please do not fall for the play-on words or the manipulation of terminology. Both neighboring properties are B2 and both of them are used as residences. Residences can be built on B2 and as a matter of fact, three of those B2 lots have residences on already and two more will be coming in the next year. I just stood in support of a special, whatever you call it, special permit for a neighbor to build a home. This proposal, oh, just because you drop an actual business in between two homes does not make it a community mixed-use. This proposal to construct an ultra-modern design, massive three-story, I wanna correct Kate, it is three stories, but there's also parking underneath, so it's four stories above ground level. A square-foot building that spans the entire width of the parcel and requires two other parcels to be used for parking is an insult and an assault on the neighbors living there. This proposal will close one of my neighbors in. She's got boat storage on one side, across the street from her, she's got trailer storage and here she's got snow marine construction equipment. No office or anything, just their trucks. And now over here, she's gonna have a parking lot. Is that right? Is that fair? I have beautiful homes on each side of me and she's gonna have storage lots? It's not fair and it's not good neighboring and it's not in keeping with the comprehensive plan, which calls for equality of life and healthy communities. Remember the underlying reason for the comprehensive plan, to grow New Hanover County with healthy, living, working, learning communities that encourage and provide for the health, safety, enjoyment, prosperity of its residents and its workforce, and in turn, the county. I can only imagine what this proposed building would look like standing between two homes, both of longstanding Seabreeze residents. The applicant's offer to install an opaque fence, six feet high, I just heard, is moot. It's a moot point. The building towers over everything in the area. And if there is such a thing as an office and institutional district, that's where this building should be.
Ms. Tiley, if you could wrap it up, please.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I oppose the applicant's justification and I ask that you deny the rezoning request because the use is too intense for the generally low intensity and the generally residential area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There is a five-minute rebuttal period available to the applicant at this time?
Thank you, and I'll just go through some of the notes that I made during the public comments. So, to Mr. Dinkins' comments, it's my understanding and from staff's report that that area to the south, and if it's possible, if I could have my presentation back up, that'd be great. Thank you. That it is permitted as a bed and breakfast. To be honest, I'm not up to date on all the guest house use and what that difference is. Again, it's my understanding that that property to the south is permitted as a bed and breakfast. One of the things with the bed and breakfast too, because we will be required to have this 100-foot conservation setback, as far as views and obstruction with that bed and breakfast, will be setback far enough, it's not obstructing their view of the inner coastal waterway looking out or even slightly to the left. Again, the concept design, I heard some comments about that as well. There were some concept designs and elevations that we have toyed with. However, at this point, we're pretty much back to the drawing board of what we're settled on, which is why I didn't feel comfortable showing any of those to you today, if that's not the settled plan. It is planned to be, of course, an office, so it will have likely more of an office look and feel than opposed to like a residence. But as far as an actual elevation, I don't have that for you today. And also, it's a requirement, of course, as you know, of this conditional rezoning request. The change that was requested, or the change that was mentioned in this area recently, yes, this was rezoned to R7. However, there's also been commercial developments in this same area. The more intense commercial business park is closer to Carolina Beach Road, which makes sense. However, it is a commercial project. What we're proposing here in this same Seabreeze area is also a commercial use, but it's a less intense use. As far as the surrounding residences, if you're talking about a contractor's office, from a commercial use perspective, it's my opinion that that's almost as similar to a residential use as you could get, as far as noise pollution, air, light. There's not gonna be anything except for people visiting the offices during business hours and then going home at night. So, to the extent that it interferes with any of the residential uses, we just don't see that that being an issue. Next, heard some comments about the comprehensive plan. Understand that there may be plenty of folks, including some of the folks that spoke tonight, who don't agree with certain provisions in the comp plan or the mixed-use place type. However, when a landowner obtains the property, as is the case here, that comprehensive plan is the guiding document that they're supposed to look at. That's the guidepost for, here's what the county wants to see, here's what the goals are for particular areas. So, when we look at the community mixed-use place type, as Ms. Tiley mentioned, there are other uses that are appropriate there. However, so is the office use. I believe that might even be the first one that's listed in the comp plan under this place type. Again, we're proposing a very not intense use in this particular area as far as commercial uses go. Yes, this area has historically been zoned B2 and there's not, it's not full of commercial. We're not saying that it is. However, it's my understanding, this property has been zoned this way for decades. As of right now, the B2 properties have not been requested, except for this one that we're now requesting back to B2, requested to be zoned residential. So, that while there may be an appetite from some of the folks for more residential, the property owners that own these other B2 properties that completely surround our property have not requested rezoning to residential. Again, the height, that's the last thing I wanted to comment on. The height restriction here in B2 would be three stories or 50 feet. That's the same height restriction that would be applicable to any of the surrounding properties. And again, because of this flood zone, even in the R7, the height restriction typically would be 40 feet, but when you're building in this flood zone, you do get some additional feet. So, it's a difference of six feet, really, between what the R7 would be and what we're proposing here under the B2. So, again, happy to answer any questions the board may have and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. At this time, there is a, unless there's any questions. There is additional five-minute rebuttal period available to the opposition. So, if anyone from the opposition would like to speak, there is five minutes allotted to you.
Again, thank you. And I think there seems to be some inconsistent messaging about are residents being used as a B2 bed and breakfast? I think staff could probably figure that one out real quick. We, Bill Castor, thank God for old Bill Castor. As a commissioner, he and Bert Billings sat down with my family and said, you can't be, that's right, that's what I remember from 20 years ago. You can't be a bed and breakfast because you don't have water and sewer. Your well and septic have to be at that time 100 feet apart. The county would not let us have that bed and breakfast status. We could, however, be a guest house. That's what I remember. Staff could probably figure that one out real quick, because that seems to be a bone of contention, as to we're using the house, excuse me, primarily as a B2. It's our mother's dollhouse. We were a B2 piece of property and they helped us put our little family residence there that Ms. Tybee and her husband Steve stayed in before they built their home. Kate's been to our house. We use it as our little community center. It used to be the host house for the Seabreeze community festival that we had. Our only secondary use is just a little vacation rental. So, that's what I needed to clear, because that seemed to be a bone of contention as to we are a definite B2 use. That's why we were a B2 use. We could not seem to get residentially, a true residential use, but Mr. Castor and Bert Billings said, hey, can't be a B&amp;B because of the 100-foot difference between the well and the septic tank, but you can be a guest house. That's what we operate as, our family, our friends, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard from in opposition during the rebuttal period? There's 2 minutes and 43 seconds.
I just have a question. I really would like to do my Hovey rebuttal again, but you heard me, you know what I mean. I'm curious if you did approve this, which I hope you did not. Are we gonna have to have lights out there on that parking lot, lighting up our bedrooms and living rooms all night? Because we have a beautiful little waterfront community and, you know, we're dreaming about that whole little loop there being homes. And those homes will have water views. And that's what our dream is for Seabreeze. Anyway, I just wanted, I wanted to think about adding a condition, if you did approve this, on the lighting. Like, it has to go off at 6:00 PM or something like that, or whenever their office closes, which I hope is, you know. We go out, look at the stars, we can see lots of stars because there's no lights down there. And we don't want to become a commercial, community mixed-use district. That's all of that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Let me just, is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition? All right, we'll close the rebuttal period. This time, we'll open it up for board discussion. Shryan?
Thank you, Chair. I actually have a question for Mr. Dinkins. I hope I pronounced your last name correctly. Appreciate you coming in here on one leg or one limb. Hypothetically, if that building was insurance agent's office or lawyer's office and physically was less imposing, how would you feel about that property?
Much, much better. Still, you know, we really think we should enjoy that.
I understand.
But as you brought that up, every day when I travel down toward Carolina Beach, I look at a commercial facility that's right along Carolina Beach Road, adjacent to the liquor store at Carolina Beach. And that's a neat little commercial setting that, you know, we would love to have in our neighborhood if we had to have one. And they have probably, I think I've counted, six spaces for parking. You know, excuse me. Part of our concern also is that, what happens next year? When someone decides, you know, we don't really need to be here, let's sell this place. Maybe we could turn it into a condominium unit or, hey, a nightclub on the waterway. Those are our concerns. As they said, we've enjoyed our little residential enclave. We want to be good neighbors, but that gorgeous building is just out of character for our little old raggedy Seabreeze that we, as she said, enjoy our starlet nights.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Zach, this is really for you and the planning team. Is that use, Mr. Dinkins' use, is that considered commercial or residential under the current zoning ordinance?
Bed and breakfast falls under the lodging use, which is typically more commercial. I can't speak to what the ordinance exactly was in 2004. But yes, it falls more in a commercial than residential use because it's lumped in with hotels.
Gotcha, gotcha. All right, can we bring back up the applicant's slide presentation with all of the uses that were, had to strike through through it? That one. So, we have struggled as a planner, I think, with the Seabreeze area. We've talked about it and talked about it and we have really struggled with this area. And Kate, Scantin', has that got that right?
Scantin'.
Scantin', sorry. So, you hit the nail on the head of what we're struggling with. So, as a B2, and if you look at their zoning of all of that area of Seabreeze, all of these uses are allowed by right. Meaning, you don't see us, we don't see y'all, it is allowed by right. It goes to a staff administrative permit approval. And to your point, as far as a bar or nightclub, you can see there, all of those uses at the very top of commercial uses is actually stricken through. The interesting thing is, is that as this sat before it came to us, all of these were allowed. It then went to R7 with conditions applied to that, which basically means that it starts to cut things away of what is allowed by right. This particular one now is going back or attempting to go back to the B2 designation, but only would be allowed to have a contractor office or the offices for private business and professional activities. In other words, and I don't have a count on all these uses, all the other ones would not be allowed. The challenge that we face, and maybe this is just Cameron's personal opinion on it, is that we have consistently heard, we have a plan, we have a small-area plan, I guess I would call it, for Seabreeze area that says B2. We have consistently seen projects that kind of either go residential or go commercial. I know in staff's presentation, you actually had a bulletin point that said, we went one way on one project and we went the other way on another project. We are struggling with this area to try to figure out what you guys want to do. And I'll address that maybe a little bit, but the comprehensive plan is obviously what needs to be updated and the area needs to be updated. But I just, I wanna drive that point home that some of the uses that maybe y'all think could be allowed would not be allowed, because now we're actually really, really restricting, if we go in the direction of approving this, and obviously, it still has to go to the county commissioners, it is really restricting the overall uses that would have been allowed by right as an original B2 use. So, all the other B2 zonings around there that are owned by XYZ, I believe you own, I don't know how many parcels, you listed off, six or seven parcels, technically, you could do any one of these uses by right. So, that's what we're struggling with. And I get it, you very well may not, but that's what we're faced with tonight, is do we reset? Go backwards and basically reset to what we were, what it was? Y'all work with the county in the comprehensive plan process and try, quite frankly, give the staff some direction of what the community wants to see, so when we have projects that come in before us, we can actually put something in place that works for the community. So, we're really struggling with this one.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Ryan?
I have some questions for you, Zach, real quick, if you don't mind, and then I wanna address the opposition. I don't know if you can actually answer this or not. Do you have a sense for the percentage of this B2 that is developed right now? Sounds like there's a lot of undeveloped parcels that are kinda sitting around.
It's hard to give an exact percentage. I know that boat storage is the most common B2 use in the area and it's expanded to some other parcels as that business has grown. And with the ski-doo rental, all those down there, those are really the only two B uses that we see.
It's 5%.
Okay.
Okay. And then, I did hear somebody say that residential use is allowed in B2 and I was just looking at that screen. Is that accurate?
That is accurate only with approval of a special use permit, which is part of a mixed-use development.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Scanlon, I'm gonna a- address it. First of all, everyone, I thank you for, for coming and envoicing your opinion, and I know this is, uh, an important topic for you. I, I'm the newest member of the board, so I was not here for the last rezoning. Um, so yeah, I understand it's, you know, it seems pretty quick. And I can't really speak to the comprehensive plan. It sounds like there's, you know, updates, um, are, are desired in this area. In terms of the undeveloped property now, I'm, I'm curious if there's a strong desire by the community to have this area be residential. Do you have a sense for why these special use permits or, or, you know, there aren't more of these rezonings requested for that? Why, why are they sitting around and not being developed?
I mean, I think, I think first off, you just, there is a long history, right? I don't know how familiar you are with the history of Seabreeze and I might not be the best person to speak of it, but, um, you, you know, ag- again, this area was originally settled in about the early eighteen hundreds by, um, free black people, the Freemans. And, um, you know, subsequently, uh, acquired land over time. And then, um, the land was split up between their, um, heirs over time. And I think it's, um, and again, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think there's a lot in black culture that is around holding on to land. Um, because you have a long history of land being taken away from you. So folks have really held on to it. Um, I also think that, um, you know, we have seen a slow turnover. Um, I think as the older generation has frankly started to pass away, um, and land is changing. Um, I will say that, um, all of the neighbors that I have spoken with, and I'm, I am friendly with, I think, the folks that have been here for a while and the friends that, and the people that are, um, newer, and it is in this lower part, I mean, yes, it is residential is what people want, um, at this point. And when there has, and I will, um, you, you know, there was a, my property that I live on and that my neighbors live on, that was all B two at one point in time. So most of the area that is residential right now that has homes was B two. And then when property came up, um, where our properties are, and again, there was a, a plan to try to do something with it and it just didn't work out, um, from a commercial perspective. And so then it went to residential. And so particularly over, you know, I think Michael's family built their house in two thousand and four. Um, my neighbors built their houses in about two thousand and fourteen, and then there's a slow, and, and the landing came in kind of over on the, the other side. I have spoken with folks who were interested in the area but are frankly turned off by the B two zoning because it's confusing. Um, the other, one of the other really big reasons why the area has struggled is because the, the lack of water and sewer. And if your property is too small, you can't put a well, um, on it. Um, between, a well and septic. Um, you know, the water only comes down south Seabreeze right now. So for these folks, it's gonna, they're gonna be swinging it around to start to go up. Um, and, and maybe more folks would be interested in it. But I mean, again, there's just, there is a long history of people holding on to property. Um, but as I, as I, as I mentioned, um, I mean, there are forty-four B two lots in Seabreeze. Then if you take away the lots that have residential on them, um, and I just want to make a note that, my property, for example, and its, uh, other properties that were zoned residential, we have this B two strip, right? Because the area keeps orienting, it's, well, it's B two, it's B two, it's B two. Even though everything that has been built has been residential and frankly, the past thirty years. So you'll see these lots and the, the property that is to the north, the Wright's property, where they said, "Yeah, there's this strip that we can't build on, that's the buffer." You'll see that throughout Seabreeze. Essentially in nineteen seventy-one, they split the properties so that there would be, if it had a home on it or a building that maybe was mixed use, they split it. When I acquired the property at, um, one oh oh one in ten forty-five, we couldn't figure out why there was the one, there was the strip that was zoned commercial and then realized, oh, that was in nineteen seventy-one, they split the properties. So I, you know, yes, the area wants residential because commercial hasn't worked.
Let me ask the question to you. Why, why have you not tried to build residential on your properties?
Uh, because I just acquired them, so I am absolutely planning on having residential use on the property. Um, and that's part of the reason I decided to invest in the area, um, is because, you know, I, I want to put my money where my mouth is, I believe, in the area. Um, so I actually technically own the largest parcel of commercial, which is one point six six acres. Um, is one strip, and then I have another one that's about twelve hundred square, twelve thousand square feet. So, um, but it's because I believe in the area. Um, and I think that, um, um, I actually am hoping to do a community use off of my property so that that might actually help folks who maybe are a little bit more landlocked be able to have a little bit more value into their property to make it a little bit easier to make the adjustment towards residential.
Thank you.
All right, if I could just steer the board back onto some discussion here so that we can move this matter forward a bit. We've heard a lot from the applicant, we've heard a lot now from the opposition, and we've had some questions answered. I think it'd be good to hear from the board as to where we stand, um, currently with this application.
I would, would say that sometime, maybe a couple of years ago, somebody came to our board, wanted to try to rezone some of that property and therefore a residential project. I objected to it because of the flood plain and density issues. But I hear you say you want residential, but there was a lot of opposition to that residential project as well. So I don't know what's best for this property. Um, I do think though that an office building is not terribly out of character with that area out there. You can build a house almost as tall as that building, um, in, in a, with a special permit, mixed use or get it rezoned to some R seven or whatever, and you could build a house forty-four or forty-five feet tall for, if it's in a flood zone and it's elevated, you know, three stories with parking underneath, that's a tall building. Um, this building is limited, it's about the same height. I don't see that it's a big deal in terms of what could be and what is. I would like to know what the total height of the building is to the south that we keep calling bed and breakfast. Do we know that?
I don't have that information.
Our guest house is approximately thirty-four feet tall.
From grade?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all we've got to say. I, I, I don't think it's a bad project. I think it's probably a, a benefit to the, to the county and benefit to the area and, um, um, but we'll, we do have a lot of, uh, work to do in the comprehensive plan update that's coming up. As Mr. Moore said earlier, uh, B two has been the bane of our existence almost in terms of how we deal with all these properties in the Seabreeze community. You're right, it was zoned probably inappropriately in nineteen seventy-one to B two. I, I, I can't tell you why they did that. I do know that the, um, uh, plan that was done for that community, uh, left it that way. And there hasn't been a whole lot of changes there. And as a matter of fact, there hadn't been a whole lot of changes of, of any kind down there. I know there are other commercial uses out there and there are other properties that could be used for commercial by right, as Mr. Moore pointed out. They're limiting the number of uses they propose to have on this property just to the contractor's office or professional activities. They want me to bars, want me to restaurants, will be no anything other than in an office building. It generates probably very little traffic in terms of, uh, number of employees that could be probably housed in a building of that size. Having said that, I, 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 I don't have any problem with the proposal as it's submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ever.
Oh, go ahead.
Ms. Chairman.
Scoot, go ahead. No, no, I didn't hear you. Please, go ahead.
Ms. Ryan House.
I mean, I'm struggling with this. I don't, um, I think the project is good. I think they're doing the right things with the pre, the tree preservation, the setback, the pedestrian walkway. I'm hearing that a lot of the residents want this to be residential, but I'm not really seeing that happen. And I think most of the properties around here are, are commercial. I know staff has recommended to approve this. I don't have a great reason not to.
Mr. Moore used the term struggle a few minutes ago and, and that's, that's exactly what I'm feeling right now. It's, it's surrounded by B two. It was B two, it switched. Now we want to go back and only use one, uh, one use. So normally in my mind, that would be a slam dunk, easy. Here's where I've, I've got, um, a little bit of heartburn about where, where this request is right now. There's a, a residence right beside it. Most of the buildings that have been built nearby, the newer buildings, have been residential. I don't see any part about this application that deals with frontal, frontal elevation. And one of the neighbors mentioned, uh, lighting at night. Uh, maybe there's part of this application that it just didn't get, didn't get. But I'm just wondering if the applicant would feel okay restricting the, the exterior to, to something that's in keeping with the residential look and, um, and doing something about the height and the direction of night lighting. If you do, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling great about it.
I'm gonna go ahead and weigh in here, I think. I, I've, I've been on this board a while and I've seen a lot of projects come before this board in Seabreeze. And I don't live in Seabreeze, but I hear from a lot of those folks and have heard from a lot of those folks over the years in the various projects. And I think that some of my fellow board members have touched on this. In isolation, I have no issue with this project. In fact, it's very well done. I like what they've proposed. The restrictions on the uses is extremely generous. And I think, like I said, in opposition, or I mean, in isolation, I wouldn't have any opposition to this. But I repeatedly hear from Seabreeze and from the folks in Seabreeze as to how they would like their community, um, to proceed. And they are very consistent. They would like residential. Now, this board heard an application for this property, I think it was approximately seven months ago, and determined that residential was appropriate. And obviously things can change and we understand that. And this board, I think, does a good job of making sure that, you know, we are not an impediment to, um, an individual property owner's use of their property as they see fit within the confines of the ordinance. But that being said, I do have some concerns about going backwards. Because obviously we decided to move forward in that rezoning for a reason. I think we heard from the folks that this is the way in which they envisioned their community moving forward. They've been consistent there and we felt that that was the best use of that property at the time. I have some extreme concerns about flip-flopping back over. And as Mr. Moore said, going backwards. So, you know, this is not a knock on the applicant. It's not a knock on the project. You know, if it was somewhere else, I wouldn't have any hesitation. And they're doing a good job of making me think long and hard about this. But I do believe that the B two that's currently there is, if it was anywhere else, and this is where I, where I'm struggling a little bit too. I mean, if this was anywhere else, we would not be considering this for approval. It, it does not seem to fit. If this was anywhere else, that B two area most likely would not be there. It's only being considered because of Seabreeze. It's only being considered based on the history of Seabreeze, based upon what that area used to be. But it hasn't been that for a very, very long time. And I'm concerned that if we go back, that's exactly what we'd be doing. We'd be going back to what I think we all tend to agree is probably not an ideal. It's just my thoughts and comments based upon having sat through multiple applications in Seabreeze over the years and, and what I've observed. I just have some extreme concerns about putting this back into the B two when I feel confidently we've been attempting, without any type of comprehensive plan, to move those areas out of B two. Whether or not we've been successful with that is a whole nother question. It's Ryan.
Thank you Chair. Homogenous uses don't equate to quality development. And sitting here, I don't have as much experience as you, Chair, but I've been on, on the board a little while now. And we don't always see really good projects. I, I look at, um, first of all, I appreciate the emotion, um, of the Seabreeze residents and their compassion for the area and their willingness to speak out strongly. But it's always nice to see neighbors work things out. And does it, whether it's B two or C, uh, seven, R seven, excuse me, um, just kind of loo- look at the project and is it additive to the community? Can it be complementary? It's great to see quality development and there are many, many, many examples along the waterway where somebody decided they want to have their professional office, um, on the waterway to enjoy it and it's surrounded by residential. And, and these buildings are very tastefully done. When I look at what, what appears that the applicant has done, they've said, it, it doesn't appear that the applicant has turned a blind eye to their neighbor and just said, "Hey, we want to, uh, give you water out of a fire hose" when they have said, "We are going to restrict." I mean, they are limiting the upside value of that property by restricting it, if this were to pass, to two uses. Out of all those uses on the list, it could be a contractor's office or professional office. They're now subject to a hundred-foot setback. We hear people talking about, you know, buildings are too close to the waterway, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that's a concession. They're, uh, preserving all four live oak trees. We hear about people complaining all the time because developers are taking down the trees. So there certainly has been an effort on their part to limit the impact. I- in my opinion, maybe they haven't gone far enough. An eighty-nine-hundred-square-foot building? My guess is if those are two single-family houses there, they would be somewhere around thirty-five to four thousand square feet each. So if you combine the two, that, it's less than eighty-nine-hundred. And, and also the parking, I don't know what the minimum that's required, but the parking seems to be a bit much if we dig into the details. It, it doesn't quite become complementary to the neighborhood. I don't think their goal is to provide trailer storage on those extra parking spaces. Uh, got plenty of that down there now. But I, this would be a lot more palatable to me and somewhat fit into the neighborhood if, um, the applicant was to into the neighborhood if, um, the applicant was to rethink the visual impact, um, of what they proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Hynde. Do you have any additional board discussion in this matter? I know, I know this one is a tough one, so, you know, I think we do need to, to move it forward. So if there's any further discussion, um, we can have it. If we're ready to potentially move forward with a motion, I can-
Do we want to ask the applicant if they're amenable to a height reduction or something else like that, or the, the light concerns?
I think if we believe that those, um, are conditions that we would like to potentially, um, discuss with the applicant and have imposed as part of any type of approval, we can, we can do that. I think we should have an idea as to whether or not, um, there is at least a general desire to request that first.
Let me, let me just make, verify something. So just to verify from the applicant's standpoint, obviously, there is six current conditions that y'all have agreed with, and then there was a new one as far as a fencing requirement they've shown on the site plan. Am I correct there?
Yes, we're proposing- Yes, we're proposing a fence to the property to the south.
Right.
That's not listed as a current condition. It's, but we have agreed to a condition that our use will be consistent with the site plan, and we've included that fence on the site plan.
Okay. And then from a staff perspective, that is a requirement per y'all's, the county's code as far as a buffer?
No, sir. Uh, properties that are zoned B2 do not have to buffer to other B2 properties. The applicant would be more or less locked into their site plan, but if it's the board's will to accept that as a condition, then you can do that, and it would, that would then be applied during TRC.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the fence. And I would assume a fence, we're talking about a six-foot fence, correct?
Yes.
A standard fence?
Yes, that's what we have on there, an opaque six-foot fence.
Okay. And then there was some question on lighting. Um, obviously, in that particular thing, in the site plan review process, the county's code would address the lighting, correct?
Yes, sir. There, there are certain foot candles that are required to adjacent properties. Uh, that is based largely on zoning.
Right.
Um, the, there is language in the ordinance that the board could use if they wish to make it more strict, um, such as if it's B2, it, or it can't spill over more than zero-point-five-foot candles onto adjacent property lines that are residential. That becomes up to two-foot candles if it's a commercial use. So the board does have room to-
I understand. Okay, thank you.
And I believe Mr. Matthews had asked about a, a condition for the lighting. We've discussed it with our client, and we would be amenable to a restriction for any lighting after hours, um, on the exterior, just that that's limited to motion, you know, security lights, and that would be it. So we're, we're agreeable to that. Although that's not required on other, you know, B2 properties, we would agree to a condition.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on one second, if you could. Mr. Avery, Mr. Hynde, did you want?
Would the applicant like to address the concerns I've expressed about potential conditions, meaning the square footage of the building and parking?
footage to limit the top three floors to eighty-five-hundred square feet, so similar to two residences that would be there. Um, and then on the parking, we're required to provide twenty-two. What we have right now is twenty-five. And so one of the conditions that staff requested was that we comply either through a satellite parking, um, or on-site. And so we've, we've done that with the plan as proposed now. So there's, there's not much wiggle room on the parking because of what's required, but as far as that square footage, yes.
Is there any other discussion before I call the applicant up?
No.
All right. If I could have the applicant come to the podium, please. If I got the applicant, please. At this time, there's been an indication from the board that they'd like to move forward with a motion. Would the applicant like to move for a continuance, withdraw their application, or move forward with the vote?
Now that we've discussed those more recent conditions, respectfully, we'd like to ask where the board stands now that those new conditions have been discussed. I think that will better inform our decision with the question you just asked.
So the applicant has asked for, um, the position of the board on the conditions, and it's the board's pleasure as to whether or not they'd like to provide some indication as to where they stand on those conditions that they've offered up.
We haven't made a motion yet, you know, so we don't know what conditions we want to agree to. But staff has listed five or six already.
So let's just quickly, I think, talk about, we've got six conditions that staff has proposed. We've had multiple conditions that we've just discussed with the applicant, including no lighting after business hours, um, a limit of the square footage, I believe, for the building, and a, was it the six-foot privacy fence on the southern boundary? Did I miss anything?
Just to make sure, just to make sure on the lighting on the exterior, it was only to be, the only lighting would be allowed would be for security lighting. That was my understanding. There was some conversation about security lighting.
So other than like motion light?
Motion, yeah, motion detection light.
Now, does that pertain to the parking area as well?
I'm not sure we got down in the weeds at that far on it.
Is there anything else that we missed?
We would just like to note that that parking area is not subject of the rezoning since it's already by right.
So the parking area is not subject to the rezoning, rezoning, so that would not be part of any type of lighting condition?
I would just say we're looking at lighting on the building. Exterior of the building is what we're looking at. That's how I understand it, unless somebody understands it differently or wants to understand it differently.
So the three additional conditions, other than those that have been included by staff that I have, and that my understanding is the applicant has indicated their agreement would be no lighting after business hours other than motion lights on the building for security purposes, um, the inclusion of a six-foot privacy fence on the southern boundary, as well as the limit of the square footage. Did we discuss an exact limit?
Eighty-five-hundred.
Eighty, a limit of the square footage to eighty-five-hundred square feet. Those are the conditions that I have.
Should we ask the applicant?
So I think what we're discussing now would be a motion. If the motion was to approve, the motion to approve would include the proposed conditions from staff as well as those three conditions.
I'm certainly willing to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, but, um, whether I agree to all the conditions that we've just discussed is another matter. And I don't agree to all those conditions, but I am willing to make a motion, and the board can vote on it, or they, you know, if I don't get a second, then somebody else can make a motion as well.
Well, I think we need some, we need some direction from the applicant as to what they would like us to do. I mean, I think what-
I'm, I'm gonna step in here. Otherwise, we're gonna be here until the cows come home. Um, we're almost getting close to that already. So I am fine moving forward with this application, and I say that, I say that in the sense that I also do not like the fact that we're having to struggle with another Seabreeze project. I am for the community to get with staff and let's figure this thing out. Matter of fact, y'all figured it out. Unfortunately, what we are faced with is B2 and B2 and B2 consistently there. So I'm fine moving forward. I'm fine moving forth with the cis conditions that staff has proposed. I'm fine with moving forward with the additional three conditions. Um, if the recommendation fails, then it fails. But that's, that's why I'm out.
Yeah, I mean, I've made my position clear, so.
Chair, I, I'm, I'm fine moving forward with, um, the three additional conditions.
I am as well.
All seven, just leave it alone. That's the one.
So at this time, I just need some direction from the applicant. Are we moving to continue, to withdraw, or to move forward with the vote? I think we're prepared to make a motion.
We'd request that you move forward with the vote.
All right. The applicant has agreed to move forward with a vote. Mr. Avery, I think you indicated you were ready to make a motion.
Well, I was.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hynde?
Uh, yeah, I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely. Um, I move to recommend approval of proposed rezoning. I find it consistent with purposes and intent of conference plan because it provides uses in line with community mixed use place type. And I find approval of rezoning request is reasonable within the public interest because the proposal would place the parcel back into its original zoning designation more closely matching with the surrounding zoning and properties. Proposed conditions, the use must be generally consistent with site plan. Well, that goes without saying, but uses are restricted to the two uses that we, uh, had, uh, seen earlier. That would be for contractors' offices and offices for private business and professional activities. New outdoor storage would be allowed in association with the construction materials of any kind for the contractor's office. All live oak trees on the property will be preserved as part of the development. Subject approval by DOT, the property will stall striping and signage for a crosswalk on South Breeze, South Seabreeze Road connecting the off-street parking with the subject property. Project must meet the county's minimum parking requirements through either a satellite parking arrangement for safety provided. Uh, if we don't regulate that, that's my right, and we have new conditions for that. Or other alternative parking approved by staff. I'm not sure where that goes, but if it goes through a technical recommending, maybe they can negotiate that out. Um, I do agree with the additional condition that you limit the building to eighty-five-hundred square feet. Um, I don't know that we do much about lighting. Uh, I mean, it's an office building, looks just as much like a residential structure to me as anything else. And, uh, I don't know that, I have any, uh, I don't think I support that. I think lighting should be whatever, whatever lighting they need to accommodate the use of that building. And, um, let's see.
Fencing.
I think that's it. Thank you.
The six-foot fence?
The fencing?
The privacy fence on the southern.
Privacy fence, I'm sorry. Thank you. I do agree to that as well, although I don't think it serves much of purpose. It's only six-foot tall, and so thick, and the building is gonna be four-five-hundred fifty feet tall.
All right. So there's a motion on the table from Mr. Avery. My understanding is the motion, um, that's included in our packet with the proposed conditions that staff has presented, the six-foot privacy fence and the limit of the square footage to eighty-five-hundred square feet. It does not include the lighting, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's on the table. Do I have a second? The motion's-
Sounds very convincing, wasn't it?
The motion's been seconded. It's now up for a vote. So all those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
There you go.
Motion passes.
I do have a comment for the people in the room. Um, everything associated with Seabreeze is, is, uh, just, has a lot of passion to it. And, uh, I'm not so sure the commissioners are gonna approve this. And I would highly recommend the applicant go back to the neighbors and talk about concerns. Because I really have a concern, I, I, just because we approved it, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna be passed by the commissioners. Work your stuff out.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. If they just come and talk to us to start with, maybe we could have worked something. Really appreciate that.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I might have a quick second. Um, we do have some of our long-range planning staff here tonight. We're scheduling meetings to talk about the update to our comprehensive plan. So if y'all have a moment, we can get all the contact information we need. If you don't, I think we have some of your contact information already, and we'll be in touch.
Yeah, like I talked, we do have one.
I, I think, I know we have your, um, your email address, so we'll be in touch. Yeah, they're outside waiting for you, I think.
She's here. She's in the post office. So she's gonna go through this whole-
Lighting is out. I've never done that in my entire life.
Thank you very much. If you've stayed with us for this long, I appreciate your patience. We're gonna move to matter number three, on for public hearing. This is rezoning request Z24-19, request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions. Applicant on behalf of Harry Wilson with HN Investments LLC to rezone approximately 5.17 acres located at 308 Hermitage Road from the CZD/CS Conditional Commercial Services District to a new CZD/CS District for the use of wholesale nursery and a limited list of prohibited uses. This time, we'll hear from staff. Mr. Farrell?
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. This request is to rezone approximately five acres from an existing conditional CS district to a new separate conditional CS district. Project is located at 308 Hermitage Road. It was zoned conditional CS in February 2022 as part of a 30-acre commercial business park and wholesale nursery. From the aerial photography, we can see the five-acre project area, uh, that is currently undeveloped, and it is just north of the existing wholesale nursery. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. Here are examples of commercial business parks, and here are examples of wholesale nurseries. This slide shows the existing approved concept plan for the 30-acre business park. It consists of wholesale nursery, one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand square feet of commercial business park, is approved with two driveways onto Hermitage Road, a stormwater pond on the west side of the property, and due to the lack of public water and sewer, sorry, public sewer, several areas for septic systems. Rezoning under consideration this evening is for that area highlighted in blue. is for that area highlighted in blue. This show, this slide shows that five-acre proposed concept plan. Application shows a new private driveway to serve the site, serves a ten thousand square foot office and warehouse, the stormwater pond, outdoor storage at the rear of the site with the condition guaranteeing the outdoor, outdoor storage location with additional plant storage and an area for a septic system. In addition to the use of wholesale nursery, the application has included a condition to allow all uses in the CS district except for a limited list of prohibited uses. Due to the changes to the site access, stormwater pond, and removing the site from the overall plan for the business park, this is considered a new project in a separate zoning district. There's one subdivision under development in the area and one state transportation improvement project, which is included in your staff report. Site has full access onto Hermitage Road. Vehicles leaving the site have the option of exiting to Castle Hain Road through Hermitage or traveling north on Croatan, all of which currently have capacity. Project is gen, is estimated to generate an additional twenty-six AM and fifty PM peak hour trips. A TIA for the new leaf landing business park was approved by the WMPO in twenty twenty-one. That TIA required new turn lanes at Castle Hain and Hermitage Road and Castle Hain and Croatan Road. Because the project under consideration this evening is being removed from that business park, that TIA would no longer apply to the site. While the, while the TIA does not apply, the wholesale nursery has already received a driveway permit from NC DOT. In addition, as you heard earlier this evening, if ultimately approved, nearby Morse Crossing TIA includes a new traffic signal and other improvements to the Castle Hain Road in the general vicinity of the site. Due to the lack of public sewer, residential development in the Castle Hain area has remained largely low density, and the area's location between Holly Shelter Road and the I forty interchange to the north and Castle Hain Road and I one forty interchange to the south has led to increased commercial and industrial activity along the corridor. The original business park rezoning was found to be generally consistent with the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan because the park would allow the types of commercial uses encouraged in the employment center place type. It was also found to provide an appropriate transition between the existing industrial development to the east and lower intensity residential and agricultural development to the west. However, the proposed rezoning will result in changes to the park. The developer of the business park will be required to address the removal of the project site and redesign all or a portion of the business park. As that redesign has not been done, staff is unable to provide an analysis of the potential impacts to the existing park's master plan. Comprehensive plan designates this property as employment center, which serves as an employment production hub for office and light industrial uses. It can also include residential, civic, and recreational uses, but should be clearly delineated from rural and conservation areas. Commercial uses designed to serve the needs of the employment center are appropriate. Staff's recommendations based on the policy guidance of the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Because those potential impacts to the remaining business park are not currently known, staff would have preferred an additional coordination with the business park landowner to modify the TIA and the rezoning of the entire thirty acre business park site in order to fully analyze those impacts to the area and to the project itself. As a result, staff is recommending denial of the rezoning request. However, if based on information presented at the public hearing or other considerations beyond the scope of staff review, the board finds approval appropriate, staff proposes two conditions related to the limited use list of prohibited uses and outdoor storage. Staff has not received any comments on this request. Should the rezoning be approved, development in site would be subject to additional review to the technical review committee. This concludes my presentation. Tim Low of County Engineering is here, and the applicant has prepared a presentation.
Is there any question for staff?
Does Chair have a question?
Stay up.
Um, the previously approved, um, development, pull that site, that plan up, did it include this type of use?
Uh, yes, sir. Wholesale nursery. Uh, yes, sir. The, the original, um, site was approved for all the uses allowed in the CS district.
And nursery is one of them.
Correct. Uh, because the use of wholesale nursery, the one that's there has been there, um, it's allowed in the current, in the residential zoning district and in the commercial zoning district. So, it was on the site prior to the rezoning two years ago, has remained and is now proposing to move to the northern end of the site. How, but the main, one of the main differences here is while all the uses are allowed here and a TIA was done for the thirty acres, carving out this five acres would still allow all of those uses, but by reducing those, uh, uses in the prohibited list, it keeps it at that ten thousand square feet below generally where a TIA may be required for that particular, this particular project.
And should the remaining property be developed, um, the traffic impacts of this five-acre piece would not be applied to a future TIA potential?
Correct. Uh, any future development of the remainder, about twenty-five acres, give or take, if, again, not knowing how the site might be redesigned or, or anything like that, potentially. Thank you.
So, just to clarify, if this project is approved, does that, like, basically negate the other project? The, are the conditions of those not fulfilled that was approved a couple of years ago?
The remainder would still be subject to the zoning district that was approved and that exists today. Um, the TIA for that project would still apply, uh, but what is unknown is if, you know, as you see, the remainder of the site, there was about twenty-one hundred uh, square feet of mixed commercial in that blue area as part of the original site, and they are approved for a hundred and thirty thousand overall. If that would be moved somewhere else on the site, be removed entirely, how that might play out on the remainder of the
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Farrell. This time, we'll hear from the applicant. You have twenty minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I'm here with Harry Wilson, the owner of the tract in question. We appreciate the staff summary of the petition, but are obviously disappointed in their negative recommendation. Southern Oaks Nursery already operates. You can see at the back of the site here at three twelve Hermitage Road. It's currently land leased for that purpose. This is shot of the first corner. They've got their sign. You can see it out there in the back, but they have bought this front corner. So, keep in mind, of course, we're not rezoning anything. It is CS. We're going for CS, but because it's a conditional district, we've come to an impasse of how that can be handled. As he showed, the original conditional zoning was approved for a business park. The wholesale nursery could be part of a business park. It was there. They acknowledged it was there all along, and due to its size, a traffic impact analysis was required. The existing nursery was part of that and the TIA and the zoning approval. But you can also see that when we're going through these conditional districts, it is somewhat of a concept plan. So, before it actually got approved, the TIA was being done. This is the plan that's in the TIA. It does show two driveways. It shows the existing nursery, and it shows up to a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of potential gross floor area, the approved plan. In September of two thousand twenty-three, my client talked to the owner and said, hey, I'd rather have my own piece of land. I'd rather move the nursery onto my own piece of land. Will you buy me this? He and the owner came to staff and said, this is what we have in mind. We want to record a plat that pulls out that five acres. How do we go about that? Is that gonna cause any problems? At the time, they did not have a site plan necessarily in hand, but the concept was there. Obviously, they allowed this to be recorded, and so in two, in December of two thousand twenty-three, my client purchased it. This is the proposed plan. It, it would include ten thousand square feet of office and warehouse. So, I'm not sure where the twenty-one thousand square feet is coming in, in the staff report referring to the traffic or what would be allotted to it, but this is the site plan. Um, it would obviously have the customary plant stock, materials, lay-down yards, and self-sufficient in its stormwater management. The driveway has permit, has been, um, approved for that particular tract. Certainly, the highway people at the NC DOT are aware of the TIA, but the nursery's already there. The nursery's just moving. There's a driveway roughly where DOT believed it was going to be in the first place, and this is the plan we have. So, I originally started off with the premise that this alteration constituted a minor modification to this original CD plan. That would be easy. We wouldn't be here tonight. Um, it really is no different than phasing construction on a larger product, project, and we do allow people to phase on projects. The UDO provides some criteria for that determination of minor changes during detailed design and permitting, but the issue here was the potential since our driveway is here and the original plan showed two driveways there, what do we have left? Before I even started this project with Mr. Wilson, I talked to Mr. Eders, the owner who sold him the property, who appeared at the initial meeting with staff to sell the property, and I have talked to him again today. He is fully aware that he's not ready to develop yet, so he hasn't started any permitting. He knows that he'll be required to get a driveway permit for his property access, whether it be a single or two driveways. If it becomes two driveways, yes, then he'll have a major modification for his particular site plan, and the TIA will dictate the off-site public improvements. TRC will need to review it. They'll certainly compare the detailed design with whatever existing conditions are there at the time, and if he wants that third driveway, again, he'll be here before you. Oops, sorry. But if that translates into another site-specific conditional district, no problem. We've got this here, so this is how staff determined, and we've moved forward. This is an individual site plan. It'll sit as an individual conditional district. It meets all criteria. We agree to the conditions. Um, I believe there's a fairly detailed list of all the prohibited because of those, the first four category, the first four prohibited uses are whole categories. No educational services, no government services, no restaurants or food things. So, all of those things are exempt. We want a wholesale nursery, but obviously, when we're here and projects are being approved as conditional districts, you don't want to have that single use that ten years from now is going to be so limiting that the property is not viable unless it comes through a whole nother conditional district. But that being said, none of the uses that would be permitted could change from this site plan without a major modification other than occupying that ten thousand square foot building. So, with that, we certainly think that it is reasonable, consistent, and in the public interest. This is sensible infill. It's already there. It's not changing any of the conditions of anything, and the relocation just supports the area's transition back on Hermitage Road and Croatan, and it doesn't affect the adjacent property owner in any way that he isn't already aware of because he was party to this entire exercise. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Moore, you have a question from applicant?
Ms. Wolf, just one question, probably actually for the applicant. So, currently, you are leasing, renting the area that you're on right now, and essentially, what you've done is you've bought a piece of property, you've carved out, and you're trying to now take your business and put it on that property to have as your own.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understood that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. I do not have anyone signed up in opposition, but is there anyone that wants to be heard on this matter at all? Ms. Wolf, you've got a lot of time left.
No, obviously. I just, I just don't feel that his project should be denied when it checks all the boxes, um, and proposed rezoning would, you know, be fair and in the public interest.
Thank you. Mr. Hind, I believe you had a question for staff?
Thank you, Chair.
Um, if, if this was allowed to move forward and we approve this, what's the worst-case scenario? What's the, what could be the unintended consequences? How, how, how can this be bad?
So, I think based on our discussion, the worst-case scenario is what was mentioned by Ms. Wolf is that, um, there would be an unanticipated impact on the adjacent property owner's project that would put the existing CS for the rest of the original parent tract in, in jeopardy. And I know Robert answered the question earlier, but it's one of those situations where it's really hard to determine what the impact would be on the adjacent property owner, um, because of what, what is left. Based on what Ms. Wolf described, it seems like in staff's perspective, if the entire property had been revised, that rezoning to incorporate these changes, then that would be in line with both the approved TIA, the approved, um, recommendation, or the, the previous staff recommendations. It's more just that question as to what is possible on the adjacent parcel.
But I think I've shown that. What is possible is everything that was possible the first time around minus ten thousand square feet of gross floor area, and it didn't change. I, I mean-
To that comment, there was a change. You, 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 there, if you pull that slide back up-
Please.
The, the revised plan has now a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of potential building with only one access to Hermitage Road. There's no connection between-
Now, that's not to say.
The ten thousand, well-
Well, but DOT, I mean, this, he knows that-
There's a significant change because there's no connection between all of this, uh, additional, um, square footage of vehicular access to Hermitage Road is, is significantly changed because now, as I said, there's only one access. There's no, this plan, as is presented, doesn't show any connection between the, the nursery and the, the neighboring parcel. That's a significant change. And I've gotta say, you mentioned that you didn't feel like this was a significant change. This is a significant change, and, and one of the problems I have personally with the way the county, um, requires, uh, site plans, schematic site plans, or however you wanna say it, uh, for, for rezonings, is that they, they purposefully have set it up to where they don't, they, there's limited specificity so that these minor changes can take place. I don't see this as a minor change. This is a major change. If you presented this site plan to me compared to the one on the left, I would say that's, that it was a major site, uh, site plan change and should come back for a rezon.
And that's why we're here.
Exactly.
Okay.
But you said earlier that you didn't feel like this was a significant change.
And I don't. There is good circulation for what is remaining of it, and he can always ask for a third driveway.
So, there is a question, Ms. Ronhouse, or you had a question for staff?
Yeah, just kinda to follow up. So, is your concern with coordinating with the other owner, is it to understand if he is on board with this, so that he is not blindsided with his development? Would his con, like, approval concurrent support, would that change staff's opinion?
I think that would, would help. I mean, still, our preference would be is that the existing CS for the entire parent parcel would come back through for a rezoning that would incorporate this change. Um, it would be the same requirements, the same TIA, the same application fee, and that, that property owner would be a party to the application, so it would be clear to all parties as to what was being approved on both parcels.
Can, can I ask a question, Rebecca? Has this been brought to- Has this been brought to that property owner's attention?
Yes, I've spoken to him multiple times.
Hold on, Cindy, I'm asking.
Okay.
I will have to turn that over to, to my staff who've been working on the, this project for a while. And I will say that they have been notified of what's happening. I don't, I don't know if he's had any conversations.
Correct. As an adjacent property owner, they would have received direct mail notification from staff ahead of this hearing. And we have not received any comment or contact from the property owner as a result of that notification.
And the reason why I'm asking is I, it feels like we're protecting the property owner from, from some of the consequences that may result from our actions tonight without him doing or her doing anything to protect themselves. And I'm uncomfortable doing that if they were aware of this, if that makes sense. If they're aware of this application, which they obviously were aware of the application, if there's been discussions with them about the potential impacts that this could have on their existing rezoning and their potential, and the potential impacts on their project, I'm hesitant to use that as a denial because they didn't work with the current applicant to address those potential problems. Does that make sense? Am I articulating that? I just, that's a concern of mine. I, I, it just feels, I'm uncomfortable with that. So we've heard from the applicant. We've heard there is no opposition. We're in the board discussion phase. So I'd like to hear from the board.
The adjacent property owner sold this land to Mr. Wilson. So obviously, he's aware that you're planning to build there. And he sees something in the mail. Is, is staff's major concern about the driveway? That it goes directly out to Hermitage and does not connect in with the rest of the project? Or is it just the process itself?
Wouldn't say that the driveway is necessarily a concern. It's that because of the driveway, and if I could get my presentation back up for just one second. So this is, again, the existing plan. You see at the top, the two driveways that, locations that were approved. The proposed project is not connecting to this internal road. They're having a new third driveway cut here. Because of the additional driveway cut that would not interconnect with the remainder, that is one of the criteria that triggers a substantial modification that brings it back to this board. So concern about a third driveway, not necessarily because Hermitage Road has plenty of available capacity. You know, DOT has already reviewed the driveway permit for this site. The, even the TIA for the larger sites, improvements were, in terms of TIA, is fairly limited. So it's the fact that we need to bring it to this board for these reviews, you know, with regard to the third driveway.
I should probably picked up on this more in the agenda briefing, but would you feel comfortable about it if the two current driveways stayed and then the westernmost driveway was the point of access to the, to the property that's being carved out?
I think we'd have to see that and evaluate any kind of plan that looked like that to give you a firm answer.
Clark just brought up the point that that visit Mr. Wilson's driveway, so there's no real, really no way to go back and punch into that without the adjacent property owner agreeing.
Can I ask, Karen, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes, sir.
So. And I guess it's obviously in the legal realm. Should we perhaps have some type of statement from the original owner? Because, I mean, if we move forward, we are jeopardizing either willingly or unwillingly. I understand we have what staff has said to us. I understand what Cindy has said to us. But in today, we do not have the, anything from the original proposed applicant that was approved that says, I understand what could happen if we move forward on this project. In other words, so I just, I mean, are we in uncharted territory going with that? Going down that path without some type of formal acknowledgement from the original property owner?
I think there's something to be considered with that for the sake of, you don't know if they've abandoned their plan and they don't care or if they're unaware of how this might affect their plan with the other property. You need to be careful as you're moving on to someone else's property rights and what they can do with that once it changes because it might, it might have a severe effect on it. But if you want to put in a condition, you can. That's totally up to you for the rezoning. It's just, once you get to figure out what you want that condition to say, we probably need to tinker with the wording. I know that's not really a direct answer. That's for you guys to decide what you want to do, but we can add those things. There are some severe considerations, though, to be made.
Thank you.
I think the long and the short of it is if we had an affidavit from the owner or he was here tonight to provide us with some sort of testimony, we wouldn't be discussing this issue. So, you know, to the applicant, I would say that regardless of what happens here, I would strongly suggest that you pursue that so you can address those concerns.
Chair, I appreciate your sentiment that we may be protecting him and he doesn't need it. But I don't know that, I'm not convinced that he maybe is aware or she is aware of the implications of this. Is it possible to put a condition in, an approval that says he'll be there in person or a sworn, or, you know, affidavit as part of approval? If that's a direction that we're going?
Mr. Chair, quick clarification, and this might be a question for Karen as well. Is the recommendation that they are, that y'all are considering including a condition to advise the commissioners when they're making a decision that the adjacent resident should provide some sort of testimony or affidavit of their understanding and support of this request? Or are you considering a condition to the rezoning itself? Because that would be the question is how, how that would even be structured. I would, I would think that a recommendation as part of your recommendation of approval or denial as to what the Board of Commissioners might need to see might be more appropriate. I don't think the other is something that we would be able to enforce.
And that's correct, Ms. Roth. You can't put an order on someone who's not subject to this. So asking them to provide an affidavit or testimony wouldn't, wouldn't be enforceable.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, that makes sense. So recommendation to the commissioners is, would be the one we're going to. Okay, thanks.
Is there any more board discussion regarding this issue or the potential condition? Do we need to talk about that, the language of the potential condition? Does anyone feel strongly or does anyone disagree with a condition of some sort to the commissioners for consideration of the adjoining property owner?
I think what we're trying to get to here is clarity and kind of full disclosure because we are dealing with unknowns and how that could affect the, the property owner that sold the property. So I don't know exactly how we do it, but I would be in favor of the concept of approving this request and making a recommendation that an affidavit from the owner be provided to the commissioners. I realize we can't require that. We can't put a condition on a.
We've got to be careful because we can't, you know, going back to Ms. Roth's point. I mean, we can't make a requirement for someone to do something who's not here.
But it would strengthen their case considerably in front of the commissioners.
Could, we, we could not apply that to someone who's not part of this case, but could we require the applicant to provide verification?
Sounds like that's, they've had those conversations.
And Ms. Hip, that's what I was, would say you might want to venture into that direction. Where there's some sort of acknowledgement of due diligence made by the applicant to give the owner enough notification about how this may or may not affect their property. That would probably be accept, more acceptable because.
Because we're putting that on the applicant, not, not the.
But I would make sure, I'd caution against conditioning it that she has to obtain it. Just that she has shown her due diligence and her structure on trying to get that completed because the applicant may not be able to obtain it for whatever reason. They may never, ever contact her back. So as long as you have, she's shown that she's tried to do and exercised all, you know, certified mail, hand service, all that kind of stuff, I think you could go that direction.
Yeah, I think, I think what, I think what our legal counsel has advised is is appropriate from a conditional standpoint to go along with any type of motion to approve. It would be a condition on the applicant and for the applicant to provide sufficient evidence of their notification and/or attempt to communicate with the adjoining property owner regarding this rezoning request and the potential impacts it may have on his property. Is it well, is there any discussion on that or are we all comfortable?
That, that seems, that seems to, a, a good structure for that motion.
All right, Ms. Wolf, will you please come to the podium? You've heard our discussion regarding a proposed recommendation or condition to go with the motion. Is that something that the applicant would agree to?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. So subject to that condition, do you wish to move for a continuance, withdraw the application, or move forward with a vote?
We'd like to move forward, please.
The applicant has requested for us to move forward with a vote. Is there a motion from this board?
All right, I'll make a motion. Let me see, I'm on the right one here. All right, so I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezon. And I find it'd be generally consistent with the purposes and intended conference of plan because the project allows the types of commercial uses encouraged in the employment center place type. I find recommended approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the rezoning allows a relocation of an existing business that would support the area's transition into a service node as listed in the proposed conditions from staff. Number one, all uses in the C five district, oh, sorry, CS district are permitted except for the following uses in use categories listed in table 4.2.1, principal use table, civic, educational services, government services, healthcare services, food and drink, including bar nightclub, convenience store, food market, grocery store, pharmacy, bank, and/or financial institution, car wash, commercial recycling facility, large collection, small collection, processing and processing and collection. Number two, outdoor storage, except for plants for the wholesale nursery and any future uses is restricted to the rock and mulch bulk materials area as shown in the southeastern corner of the concept plan. Along with that, Mr. Collin, I would ask that you supplement my motion with what you literally just said 10 seconds ago.
So the third condition.
Absolutely perfect, and the third condition, if you don't mind supplementing that.
The third condition would be for the applicant to provide sufficient evidence of their communications with, or their attempted communications with the adjacent property owner regarding the pending application and its potential impacts on that property owner's project. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded.
We'll have a discussion on the motion.
We can have a discussion on the motion. It has been seconded, so we will need a vote, but we can have a discussion.
It seems to me that these, this property owner already knows what's going on out there. We're asking this, this client, the, the applicant to do things that I think are unnecessary, but if it makes you feel better, that's fine. But the point of matter is this guy bought this property from that owner for that site plan. They know what's going on. We wouldn't sell the property to him. I just think it's an unnecessary addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. So there is a motion and there is a second. We do need to vote on that motion. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
One no, motion carries.
We'll clarify that no by saying that I didn't agree with all the conditions. That's why I voted no.
Fair enough. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We do have a request for any updates from staff or any items we need to address.
No updates at this point in time. Just a reminder that you have your joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners on September 16th from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And we hope to have some good discussion about our next phase of the comprehensive plan update. So you can hear what we've been finding out and you can share what y'all have been seeing the past few years as you've sat here.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Motion adjourned. So moved, anyone second? All those in favor, aye. Motion passes.